Two thousand two twenty-three budget session is now in session. One second, I'll bring this script up, this document. Virtual meeting. Today we will hear from a handful of departments regarding the proposed FY twenty-four budget. Madam Secretary, please call the role.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volpe is running a few minutes late. Ms. Hummer.
Present.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Radvian.
Present.
Ms. Ledbetter, I don't see has joined just yet. And Ms. Bowler.
Present.
Mr. Chair, we do have five council members and our county auditor in attendance.
Awesome. You know, I do want to just take a brief pause. You know, obviously Friday, there was a tragic incident in Annapolis. I know the councilwoman is, Radvian is certainly aware of that. Anytime we have violence that, you know, takes place in our county, especially like that, it's such a tragic, you know, thing to occur. And so your prayers to all those families that were, to the family that was impacted by that. Are we recording as well?
It is being recorded on a Rundle TV, but I am going to record.
Recording in progress.
For that reminder.
All right, no problem. Any of my colleagues have any questions or concerns they want to bring up before we begin?
Mr. Smith, I just wanted to say thank you for your thoughts regarding the deaths in District Six on Friday.
Thank you. Okay. So at this moment, we'll transition to the Fire Department. At this time, I believe we have Chief Tricia Woolford. And I'm not sure who the budget, a person who's going to introduce them as well. But I want to turn it over to you, Chief, and you know, let us know what, what you need in your budget.
Good morning. This is Shannon Clearholt. I believe Chief Woolford is waiting to be upgraded to panelist.
Yes, I've tried a couple of times. I'm going to try again here.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I see her pop up. Hopefully that's it.
Good.
Okay, because she's going to be leaving us. Thank you.
Oh, I made it. Well done here.
You put an awkward angle.
I know. It is awkward, isn't it? Oh, all right. Well, good morning, everyone. Look, you get to see the whole wall there. Hang on one second. Let me fix that for you if you don't mind. Was that a little bit better?
Yeah.
Good morning, everyone. How are we?
Doing well. We're just, we're excited about helping the Fire Department. As always.
All right, let me go ahead and I can share my screen here. We're going to do just a couple of slides. Everybody is pretty much widely familiar, thankfully, with the department. Oh, fantastic. Thank you to get all that up and running. And can everybody see that screen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, great. With me is Shannon Clearholt, who is our Budget Analyst. And then obviously, my name is Trish Woolford. I am the Fire Chief for our amazing Fire Department. So we'll go, Laura, are you running the slides? There we go. Thank you. Because I'm moving that little hand, so somebody else is.
Chief, do you mind if I just direct them to the budget, the correct page in the budget book before you get started?
That would be great, Sam. Thank you.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Sam Chirriaco. I'm the Budget Analyst in the Budget Office for the Fire Department and the Proposed Budget Book for the Fire Department starts on page two seventy-nine.
Thank you.
Good to go, Sam, or do you want me?
Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Chief. Back to you. Sorry.
Thank you. All right, so this is our organizational chart. Obviously, we have a paramilitary organization and that type of hierarchy. We do have those types of org chart, but I feel like this best represents the Anaronda County Fire Department, how we function as a whole and obviously supporting all of your communities and your districts. So just somewhat of a different setup, but how we like to be set up. So we'll go to the next slide. Again, an overview of the department. This just gives you a breakdown of how many members we have. Something to keep in mind, we are a combination Fire Department, a twofold combination, which means we are career and volunteer. It also means that everybody is a combination, a crossover of fire and EMS. There are no individual or single role firefighters or EMTs or paramedics. So everybody is cross-trained with both disciplines. And then, as you can see, thirty-one fire stations. We also have our civilian staff. We have our fire communications operators, which are dispatchers. And then along with that, on the lower part of the screen are the incidents and call volume, which we're getting pretty close to about a hundred thousand calls a year. On top of that, the Fire Communications Centers processes almost four times that many calls. Because for a lot of our incidents, we're not getting just one phone call. We're getting multiple phone calls. So this is just an overview of what we look like, and I think all of you know that pretty well. So we'll go to the next slide. So this is a big thank you. This is from our FY twenty-three. These are all the wonderful things that you have given back to the community through the Fire Department. This is the new apparatus that had been purchased, facilities that have been upgraded. You know, our facility studies that we have some pretty old fire stations, new apparatus plan, and then personnel, bringing in staffing to be able to reach some of our staffing complement goals that we've been looking at. So thank you, thank you, thank you for always supporting the department. I'm greatly appreciative of that. And this is all the hard work that came out of last year and, and everything that we did to make improvements here in the community. We'll go to the next slide. So FY twenty-four, this is what we're looking at for this year. It's a pretty tight, very concise ask in terms of budget. As you know, we've been working off of an apparatus plan. So when we talk about apparatus replacement, that is part of the plan that you all have seen, along with some of the fleet upgrades, which goes back to the two fireboats that we had purchased last year. There's a lot of equipment and training that still needs to come along with that. And then technology upgrades, we're always trying to modernize and make sure that our equipment can keep up with the pace of other programs and everything that we're running to keep the department running. And then personnel, which is the eighteen firefighters and the staffing complement of what that takes to get us closer to some of our NFPA standards. I'll leave this here for a minute, just so everybody can take a look at it. And then we just have one or two more slides and we can come back to any of these at any time. Okay, we'll move to the next one. There's a lot of information on this slide, but this is all of the capital. The most important thing is that first sentence there in red that talks about, we have no new projects. All of you are familiar with our projects. We had no changes this year. The changes that you do see and the modifications that you do see, a lot of them are cost. And Shannon has a lot of that information. If you want any of that in detail, any of the supply chain issues that we were having, any of the increases in construction costs, things along those lines. But the replacement station plan has been very much the same for the last couple of years. And this is us just slowly working through that plan and making those improvements. So no additional new projects, nothing new, nothing has changed about the scope of the project. But some of the increases that you'll see with capital are some of the costs that are out of my hands and/or GPW's hands. We'll go to the next one. So with the facility replacement, this is just a slide to let you all know, we're trying to get to all areas of the county. There are increases, there are modifications, there are improvements happening in almost every district. So this was just really a lay of the land of what we're currently doing. Jacobsville, we opened a couple of months ago. Crownsville, we've broken ground on, if you've been by that area. Lots of conversation that we've had in the years past about our Training Academy site. Cape Sinclair, we're hopefully a couple of months out from getting ready to break ground there. And then along with Jessup and Watch Chapel. So just something to show the diversity of where our projects are located and that they will all have a really good impact in your communities. And we'll go to the next. Most Fire Departments, I don't think, have the luxury to talk about the money that they bring in, that we are actually a revenue generating public safety department. So I'm incredibly proud of this slide. I think when I first did my original presentation to council and to budget, we were bringing in about six to ten million. So this is now my fourth year of doing a budget cycle, so I'm very proud that we're bringing in upwards of twenty-three million. And this is in regards to the Medicaid and some of the notes that you see on the sheets in front of you. So we anticipate to keep increasing that, and obviously, all that money goes to the general fund to be shared. But I do like folks to know that our EMS really does a great deal of work in this department, over eighty percent of the calls. And this is monetarily how we give back to the county. So I'm very proud of that number. And we'll go to the next one. That is it. We can pull that down unless somebody wants to see any of those slides individually and certainly happy to take any and all questions.
So any of my colleagues have any questions about the Fire Department? Operating work capital, I think, at that point.
Chair Smith, I'm sorry, I don't seem to see my raise hand button today. I don't, I don't know. I'll have to look around and see why it disappeared. But I just wanted to ask, ask you, Chief Woolford, first off, thank you for your presentation and, you know, all the great work that you're doing. I wanted to ask, I saw something in there that said something like Cortico Peer Support App, and I was just curious about what that is. And what, if you could tell us a little bit more about that. It sounds like something positive. I just wanted to learn.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, thank you. We worked on this with our Health and Safety Division for about a year and a half. It is an app that all the members can put on their phone, but the really, the most important part is it actually extends to all their family. So the families have it on their phone, their spouses, their kids. It gives them daily information of things that they can be doing for their health. But probably one of the most important thing is the connection that it has. So it connects them immediately to counselors, to care providers. It gives them things in their area. It links them to all of our peer support members, which we have a very robust, over fifty people in our peer support. It will automatically call them. So it, it is on their phone, it is an app. But it just gives them another resource of, if they're hesitant on asking somebody for something, something as simple as, you know, my wife wants to quit smoking. Okay, well, what do we do about that? They don't really have to start by asking questions. They can kind of go through the app and then it connects them to everything and then gives them some insight on how they can use EAP or how they can use different variations of mental health counseling. So more so another outlet where if they feel like they can't say something, they can at least start to get an idea of what they're looking for. So maybe they will be comfortable saying something. As we know, mental health and suicide is pretty detrimental to our industry.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, there's, I don't, I don't see hands. So if, I'm not sure if the software, so if you have one of the colleagues.
I believe Ms. Fiedler was next.
I'm not aware of, I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm not aware of any updates, but down at the bottom of your screen, there's a reaction icon. And if you click that, that allows you to raise and lower your hand. I'm not certain if something has changed here, but that's the best way to do that.
I see it now. Thank you.
Sure.
Shall I jump in?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Chief Woolford. It's good to see you. Thank you for your presentation, of course. The Fifth District is very excited to see Cape Sinclair moving up in the timeline or on track, I should say. So just a quick question. So during the District Five Budget Town Hall, I just heard some quick numbers on how many firefighters are riding on an apparatus. And it stuck out to me because I was a bit surprised, being that we are through the SAFER grant. So my question is, how many vacancies do we have in the department?
So we currently have a recruit class in. We have approximately, well, I shouldn't say approximately. Today, we have sixty-eight members in the recruit class. So if we take that recruit class, put them in the field to fill the vacancies, realistically, we would have no, no vacancies. On average, we'll have about forty-three, forty-four a year, based on just attrition and retirements. So once we put that recruit class in place, which they're only about three months in, based on the timing of the retirements and when they go in the field, we'll anticipate about eighteen vacancies.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question. You're muted.
Yep, Madam Vice Chair, please go ahead.
Great. Good morning, Chief. It's great to see you. I wanted to ask more about a process question. I know you took a leadership role in tackling your processing of new recruits earlier in the year. I wanted, if you could share a little bit of how that went and if you recommend doing it again? And then what happened after that stage of recruitment with the testing and all that?
Yeah, I think one of the biggest changes that I worked on when I first got here was using an external company. And we've been doing that. I think that's one of the things you saw on the list for the FY twenty-four is for promotional processes and new hire processes. I wanted to be using industry subject matter experts that were industry best practices. We have a recruitment team that goes out and we do a great deal of recruitment in multiple communities, not just this community, because that's not going to get it done, unfortunately. But then, once we had all these great pieces, I don't feel like we were finding the best product for the department and for the longevity of a twenty- or thirty-year career. So we've been piloting some, you know, different thoughts. I've been working with different Fire Chiefs across the country to see what other folks are doing that is working for them. One of the surprising things about our industry right now, which we have never had problems with recruitment, is Fire Departments are having trouble with recruitment. It's a little bit of the offset that we're seeing the trickle after the pandemic. But a lot of it is just a different generation coming in and the type of work that we are doing. So that is a national thing to go with the recruitment piece. So we have been changing our processes with the promotional practice. We've been changing our testing model. And that's really been helpful. We do two forms of testing. They do a written test, which we have always done. But then the second part is a video process that they do. So it's scenarios and they're recorded. And then those recordings are shipped back to the home company, which the one we were using is out of Memphis. And then they're scored there. So I appreciate that because it's a very clean process. It's very neutral and it's, it's just what it is when you're doing eight hundred candidates at a time, which is what we're lucky enough to get. So the outcome of that is we have increased our diversity in our recruit classes, and that's something I've very much been striving for. And right now, the recruit class we have in is the most diverse class we have ever had in the history of the department. So I'm very happy to see that and they're a very good class. They're still very new. So they're catching their bearings, but very proud of that.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for that. I might have some follow-up questions, but I'll email them.
Yes, ma'am.
And then I guess I'll shift to Mr. Volpe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, good morning.
Good morning. Good, thank you.
Good. So a couple of questions, but I'm going to start with one that just triggered to me when you were speaking to Madam Vice Chair. When you define diversity in this class and you said this is the most diverse class that you've had, what's the metric that you're using for diversity? Is it socioeconomic background? Is it educational differences between the applicants? Is it racial differences? Is it ethnic differences? What are you using in terms of the definition there when you say this is the most diverse class you've ever had?
Well, personally, my definition would vary from the numbers that, you know, I guess everybody is looking for. Just right out of the gate, the two things that people look for in the fire service is African, African-American men and women and females. That, that is the national conversation, quickly followed by Hispanics and Asians. So if we are looking at straight statistics of numbers, that would be what people would be looking for. Obviously, I look for a lot of different things when we do these interviews. But in regards to the data, we came in with eleven, twelve females. My apologies, we're at eleven, which is a very high number. That, the female ratio may not be the highest overall of every recruit class. And then in our African-American category, and this was a total of seventy, we came in with twenty-two. So if you're looking for the stats that everybody wants to talk about, those are the two. There are certainly other stats of geography, of age. Our age range is quite exceptional. We have recruits anywhere from eighteen to fifty-two. So very proud of that also.
Thank you. And so I guess one quick follow-up to that. So with respect to folks, and I don't know whether you have these targets or not, but do you have certain benchmarks that you're trying to hit with respect to the numbers of applicants that you get or the number of people you move into a class from certain groups, if you will? Is there, is there sort of a target number that you're going for? How do you know if you've reached your goal?
When they complete twenty-five years in the Fire Department as a happy employee.
Well, that's fair. That's a good, that's a good response. I guess the question would be, when you're looking at a recruit class, do you have a certain number that you say, we want this percentage of this group and this percentage? Do you have anything like that?
No, sir, because the most, really, the most important thing that we are looking for is fit, because we know the type of work that we do, the level of resiliency, the physical on top of the mental. And the fact that majority of our folks become paramedics, there has to be an academic component. So the fit and their capability to do the job is first and foremost over any type of demographic that we would be looking for. Because it wouldn't do me any good if I can't even get them out of recruit school because they go, ah, I'd rather go do something else. So fit is first and foremost, and there, there are no set benchmarks for any category.
Okay. May I keep going, Mr. Chair?
Please.
Okay, thank you. I, I may have missed this because I came in twelve minutes late. And so if you went past it before I got here, I apologize. But I'm looking at your slide three, where you talk about the breakdown between the career. You have nine hundred and thirty-six firefighters there and three hundred and twenty-four operational volunteer firefighters. What was the number of operational volunteer firefighters when you came in? How has that changed? And is there a plan to increase that number as well as increasing the staffing with the career firefighters?
So the number that's listed there is operational writing members. That can fluctuate. It does fluctuate every day. If a certification gets missed, if a fit test doesn't get taken, anything that is required to remain operational will take a volunteer member and move them off of the writing database and put them basically in the administrative database. So those numbers are constantly flexing back and forth. And then on top of that, we actually hire a lot of our volunteers, which is great. So that pulls them off of the writing database. The number that was given to me when I came in was closer to five hundred. There have been some challenges with the accuracy of the writing database. There's been some challenges with the accuracy of some of the certification levels. So we took a lot of time with Antonio Alvarez, who is the manager of volunteer services, for him to go through and make sure everything was updated in current, current EMT license, current hazmat, all those types of things, annual fit test, annual medical exams, things along those lines. So there's always fluctuation in that number. But most likely, that number stays still within our volunteers. It just goes from writing to administrative or administrative back to writing. But that would be the accurate amount of folks that are writing of our volunteer complement. To answer the second part of your question of what do we plan to do to increase that number? There are numerous companies that have retention recruitment programs that they've been working on. Recently, a couple of them partnered and went to Anaronda Community College to reach out to, you know, young community college folks that might have extra time in their day. The decrease in volunteers across the United States has been rapidly declining. This is not an Anaronda County problem. This is a national problem. And it really comes down to there are just not enough hours in the day for that type of work. You have to go through a lot of certification. It takes almost two to three years to get spun up and to meet those minimum qualifications. But we also know we can't lower qualifications because our community deserves a certain level, level of care that comes in. So being an EMTB or being a firefighter too, these are all very important things. That is a community expectation. So we continue to work with them. Anytime the association reads out or an individual company reaches out, we do whatever outreach we can to help them. We promote it on social media. We're present for events. But some of our strongest stations like Cape Sinclair, like Early Heights, some of those strong stations have good collaborations with their career crews. And that really bolsters how many volunteers decide to come in and ride apparatus. So those are very successful and thriving stations that have that good partnership with the career crews.
And so, Mr. Chair? Thank you. And so just to follow up on that, Chief, thank you. I always want to make sure I'm not blowing past everybody else. So that's why I ask. So understanding that this is a nationwide trend and understanding that, you know, we're sort of, we've seen, at least, if we take the start number at five hundred and we go to three twenty-four, we've seen a pretty good decrease so far. And if that trend continues, we're not going to have a volunteer service at some point. I guess the question I would have is, is there anything that the fire service, you all, being command staff, if you will, could offer to volunteers, whether it's any access to county benefits, whether it's some sort of stipend, anything like that, that would allow you to get minimum staffing out of volunteers so that you could plug them into your way that you're doing staffing and ensure you're getting a minimum level of commitment from them, which would incentivize it for them, but also give you the tools you need so that you're not counting on, hey, did this person decide to come in on Friday night or did they no-show? Because they wanted to go hang out with their friends, which makes it impossible for you to run a department, and I get that. So I'm wondering if there's a way that sort of you can offer a certain carrot and they can have the ability to take advantage of that and that may help them. So I just don't know if that's something you all have considered, if there are other departments nationwide facing this same issue who have considered it, if you know anything about that.
I do. And really, the consideration isn't what the carrot could be. The consideration has to be the ability for me to control the scheduling. Right now, I can't oversee that. I don't oversee it. Each individual volunteer company is a private corporation. So if there is a conversation that the volunteers would like to have about me being able to control the scheduling, if my side of the house doing operations can't determine who can be on an engine for what period of time and for how long, just as we schedule our career folks, I don't have the ability to rely on that benefit of utilizing three or four hundred volunteers in that capacity. We're very lucky that when we come in, they upstaff a second engine, they upstaff a second ambulance, and that has been fantastic for the stations that do that. But there really is no carrot until it's determined that there would be an agreement, that it would be acceptable for these companies to allow me to control the scheduling so that I was able to be able to supplement and use that in place.
Okay. I have another one, Mr. Chair.
No, please, I, I enjoy actually having my colleagues continue, because you know, you sometimes you all have a line of questioning or thought process you're trying to get to. And when you break that up, it kind of like diminishes what you're, you're trying to accomplish. So I have no problems. Go ahead and finish your, your line of thought here.
Thank, thank you. I actually, I'm done on the volunteer piece, and maybe this is an easier part to go to. So I didn't hear you touch on it, but I saw in the budget book, there is a new exempt deputy chief. Can you just touch on that briefly? I didn't hear it. If you talked about it, I apologize for asking to repeat.
No, sir, I have not talked about it, so I'm glad you asked. Currently, the department obviously has one fire chief, one assistant chief, and then we have two jeopardy chief positions. Both of those are merit positions and both of those deputies have had fantastic, successful careers, thirty-plus year careers, and they will both be retiring. Part of what's going to happen with the transition of the department is we're a very young department, which is great. But we're going to see a lot of our young folks moving into these upper executive roles very shortly. So with that, the next rank below that is division chief. The next rank below that is battalion chiefs. I have numerous division chiefs and battalion chiefs that are retiring. So therefore, of the two positions, we're basically just flipping one to appointed. So one will stay as merit, which is an internal succession. One will get flipped to appointed, which then allows the opportunity to look at applications and potentially bring in people from the outside to be able to fill that role. So a lot of time has been taken with trying to figure out the best way to move forward with the department when we do see a lot of our folks that are in the drop and who are making retirement decisions right now. So a lot of succession planning going on for the next three to six years. So that's all that is, is that position flipping from merit to appointed.
Okay, and so I don't, I don't mean this to challenge you, but I guess I'm looking in the budget book and I don't see where there's a decrease of a position. I only see the addition of a position. Am I missing where that's?
It's right below that in the write-up on the paperwork, or Sam can point that out.
Yeah, so Sam Chirriaco, Budget Office. What will happen is, once the position becomes vacant, once one of the merit retires, then the position will be abolished and the exempt. exempt position will go in. So, you don't see that addition of that position, because it will be replaced. I hope that answers your question.
It's, uh, Councilman Voki, it's on the third bullet point.
Yes, third bullet point, on page two eighty-one, it says, one fire deputy chief position in the classified service will be abolished upon pa- upon vacancy.
Yeah, I, I do see that. So, just so that I understand. So, the way it's going to be written specifically in the ordinance that, that we pass, it'll say, this position only comes into effect when the other one is abolished. So, it's sort of a one-for-one that way.
Correct. That's correct, yes.
And may I follow up with one more question, Mr. Chair? Okay, thank you. Uh, so Chief, there had been some discussion at some point about adding to your sort of high-level command staff, someone who would be, uh, some sort of a volunteer chief, right? That, that would report to you, but would be in the fire, uh, organizational chart, if you will, and would actually be involved more to help liaise between those two groups. Uh, is that funded in this budget?
No, that position is not funded in this budget.
Okay. And was there a reason that that position did not wind up? Did you ask for that position? The administration didn't give it, or did you not ask for it?
Well, that is an interesting question that you're asking me to answer, isn't it? That position is not in the budget. Um, and that's something that, uh, actually, you and I have had plenty of discussion about, of what rank that position should be, and what roles that position should oversee. So, I think our last conversation was more a combination of, uh, a volunteer support and a professional standards, um, as we're increasing that. So, no, that position is currently not in play. We're going to see what it looks like, uh, with the ability to bring in somebody from the outside and what expertise that would allow.
Okay. And so, I'm just going to follow up on that one piece. Did you ask for it? They didn't fund it, or did you not ask for it?
I did not ask for a deputy chief that oversees volunteer services.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, what was that meaning, huh? And I see that, the councilman. Uh, quick question, though, now on that line of, uh, when it comes to the reserves, uh, reserves, the, uh, volunteers. Now, obviously, I come from a, a, a background that, that's similar to the volunteer fire department. Uh, and obviously, over the last couple of months, they sort of experienced some of the disconnect between the, uh, myself, and I think even Councilwoman Julie Armour, uh, that exists between the, the firefighters, the career and the reserve side of the house. Uh, what i- is, is there a sort of, like, what is your vision on how these two elements, uh, sho- uh, should be integrated, Chief?
So, uh, well, overall, and, and let me just say, you know, every, every firehouse, every volunteer firehouse has its own personality. Um, they, you know, they're, like I said, they're private corporations, um, and so they all have, uh, their own way of doing business, excuse me. Um, and, and some of those ways are fantastic. Uh, the greatest model and the conversation that I have had with the boards and the presidents and the chiefs of the volunteer corporations, uh, is Anarondo County Fire Department is an entire government system. And the sooner each of us as an individual fire station, working in a district, or an individual volunteer company, understands our role and how that puzzle piece fits in the greater puzzle, the easier it will be. And my request has always been, the community comes first, so whatever decisions are made on the career or volunteer side, has the greatest benefit to our community members. Uh, and then it can have a benefit to our membership, and whether that's as a private corporation, or it's as, uh, our unions and our career members. So, if I were to have the ability to, to make the vision for our next ten to fifteen years, that would be it, that everybody understands the community comes first, and that role comes first. Uh, there are highly successful models in uh, some of our combination stations, and when I say a combination station, that is a station functioning with volunteer members and career members. Um, and then we have some struggles in some other places. Uh, and, and we work on that, because there, there tends to be some, some challenges that we've been facing. But overall, that has been my ask from the beginning. Everybody make decisions that the community is the number one benefactor, and then we can figure out the rest from there. I will say, it doesn't always happen, which is why sometimes we struggle.
And, and, and I totally agree. Obviously, being a, a reservist in the military, you know, my, uh, perspective is coming from, from that side of the street, where, uh, we as a reserve component are integrated into our active-duty counterparts. And it's fun, it's, it's interesting that the, uh, Councilman Voki mentioned that, whatever position potentially that was, who does, uh, your liaison in between your, your, your executive staff and the volunteer fire, is there, who is the point person on your reserve? On your reserve, your volunteer first?
There are numerous. Uh, when I got here, there was a, a civilian staff volunteer position. Uh, I elevated that position and made it a management position, so that they did have a greater reach. Um, that was my number one thing coming in. Um, obviously, besides assessing the department to see where we were, is to keep volunteer relationships um, healthy and as positive as possible. So, that position is Antonio Alvarez, uh, who is also a volunteer in our system. He is a volunteer at Cape Sinclair. Um, he is a civilian employee here. He's the manager that oversees, um, all the volunteer parts. Uh, and then the way the model is set up, because that's not going to be enough to just have that, is all of the deputies and the assistant chief, they align with the boards or the committees of the volunteer side. So, Chief Mares is the deputy chief that oversees training. She sits on the volunteer side of the training board for the volunteers. Chief Schultz sits with the operations side, so he meets with all the volunteer chiefs monthly, and they do operational work. So, every high-level executive has a component. Uh, for me, I meet with the association. I also meet individually with the volunteer chiefs and the volunteer presidents. So, there, there is a huge group that is consistently doing the work. Um, it's, it's not just a component of the department. It, it, it is literally a part of the department. So, it's some, you don't, you can't really piece it out to it is just one division versus the other. Um, it, it is, you know, it is the fabric and the roots of, of who we are.
Sure. Uh, and the, the reason I mention that is because, uh, even in my, um, every military unit, major command, I should say, every, uh, uh, MFC Major Force Command, uh, has a, you know, reserve, you know, senior-level individual that coordinates, uh, interaction between the, the, and again, I'm speaking on the military side, uh, reserve, uh, uh, personnels, to, to make sure they're integrated into the operational capabilities of, of that unit, uh, so that they can maximize, uh, the, the utilization of tho- those personnel. So, uh, th- that's all, I, you know, for me, I would love to, uh, us get to a point where, you know, you feel more tha- that it feels more integrated, because at least, at least from this perspective, it, it feels like there's still a, a slight rift, uh, that exists, maybe with particular stations. Uh, and I'm trying to get to a point where it's, it's the harmonious sort of, uh, integration. Uh, and, and I think part of that is also on, uh, the leadership of the volunteer fire stations to also sort of, uh, uh, and, and what I termed, and some of these meanings was evolve. I mentioned to the library system, it skipped, did not evolve the library, uh, and, and his predecessor, over the years, they, they would cease to exist. If they were just a place where books, uh, were kept, they wouldn't, they, they were, they would have little value added, uh, to the communities that they serve. They have evolved over the last, you know, certainly decades, uh, to something that, that modern time, uh, and communities can, uh, leverage them in ways that, that impact and enhance, uh, the average citizens' daily life. And so, I would say that to volunteers as well, and I've, I've said this to some of the chiefs, uh, that, you know, the old model of volunteering isn't necessarily, uh, the, the ideal one, right? It's just us, it just, you know, because the population has changed over time. We've had, uh, now, you know, folks are working two or three jobs in general, just to pay their bills, so they don't have all of that free flexible time to go and do all these community things, like volunteer for the fire department. So, there, there are many more demands on the average citizen than there were fifty years ago, uh, when it was just, you know, you could, you could work one job and feed your household. Somebody was trying to call me. Um, you had, you could work one job and literally, you know, pay your bills. Now, people have to do two or three jobs, where they, and they have the demands from the kids' side of the house, uh, that are, that are placed in the family. So, it's just a lot on the modern family that, that impacts the volunteers', uh, capability of recruiting folks to do all this time. And so, they too have to evolve, uh, into a, a apparatus that allows us to, when I say us, the county, obviously, the, the, your, your fire department, uh, to leverage them in a way that, that fills in the gaps, where we have these gaps, uh, within various, uh, communities. And so, I hope we can, we can, I can assist with helping bridge that gap, because I have some meetings in the, coming up here in the future, when it comes to the volunteer leadership, uh, to speak directly at that, like, how do we, how do you as a, a volunteer group? But at the same time, I also want the fire department, uh, uh, it, because one of the questions I was going to ask you was, you know, there are, there's a requirement for three uh, on an engine. Uh, what, what's the number for personnel on an engine to go out the door?
Correct. So, if you're speaking to the National Fire Protection Association standards, the NFPA standards?
Yes.
Correct, yes.
It's three individuals. Are there jurisdictions that have two go out?
There could be. Um, I, my best guess would be that they were probably volunteer-based. Um, in, uh, so, Anarondo County is a metro fire department, which means it is one of the largest fire departments in the country. Uh, we're top five largest combination fire department in the country. I will say, for metro par- departments to go out understaffed with two is absolutely unheard of. Uh, it is one of the most unsafe practices that we could possibly put our employees in.
Okay. Um, and so, one of the conversations, uh, at some point, because we could have this all day, if you can, because I want to learn more about that, like, like, what are, how are standards, uh, adopted, uh, within, uh, your department? Uh, obviously, there's the, the, the federal and, and national, uh, standards that you, you strive to achieve. Uh, and, and what are the, what are the studies in response times that have, that have led to those numbers being, uh, adopted, if you will? And so, um, uh, those are the conversations I would like to have. I'm trying to bridge a gap, uh, that I see is communication gap, and I know for a fact, a lot of, eighty percent of this, is it has to be one of the, the volunteer leadership, uh, uh, to sort of meet more in the middle. And so, uh, that, that's, that's my old two cents on that whole conversation.
No, I think it would be a great conversation to have, sir. Uh, you know, our model has always been eight minutes or less, whether that's EMS or fire. Uh, eight minutes or less is the highest rate of survivability on the EMS side for us to engage with patient care. Eight minutes or less is the highest, uh, amount of time that we should be away from any type of room and contents, or any type of structure fire. Uh, again, it has the best rate of survivability, eight minutes or less for anybody in that environment, and for us to contain it to the smallest portion of a building. So, uh, we try and live by eight minutes or less, and then on the staffing side, three and four-person staffing. Uh, we do this because of the amount of time, tools, technique, uh, staffing power in any of the scenarios. This isn't just fire, this is fire and EMS. Uh, when we have a cardiac arrest, six people at a minimum work a cardiac arrest. So, we have standards on the medical side, we have standards on the fire side, we have standards on the rescue side, which is what you see in our vehicle accidents and special operations. Um, and we do that because it does decrease the risk for the members and the employees of the department. Uh, risk management has some great studies on, uh, things along those lines of how it mitigates the money that continues to come out of a county for, um, you know, death benefits or injury benefits or things like that. So, it's, it's not just a number we're trying to meet. There is a lot of data and metrics that support uh, the amount of task work that goes into a certain type of staffing level, based on the type of piece of apparatus.
Sure, sure. So, I want to transition over to, uh, Ms. Ravi, and I see her hand up, but I do want to say that eight minutes sounds like a good fire movie title, so I want to copyright that right now. Uh, Ms. Ravi?
Um, I really just wanted to comment. I think before your tenure, we, we actually, in this very county, had trucks going out with, um, two personnel, and so, I'm grateful that we've moved past that.
Thank you, and that is because of the work of, of this group, of, of the county and of the council. Um, so really, that's a, a huge thank you to you all. Uh, but you are correct, yes. We, we no longer do that practice, but that did was one of the greatest challenges when I came into the department that we had to face.
And then Mr. Voki, I believe, has a sound up.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Chief, so I just want to go on a slightly different train of thought now. Um, so, you're, you've asked for eighteen additional positions in this budget. Um, I got some information from the budget office about the growth in the fire service, the police service, and the sheriff's office over the last uh, basically ten fiscal years. And in that time, the fire service has grown thirty-point-five percent. The sheriff's office has grown nineteen-point-two percent, and the police department has grown fourteen-point-five percent. So, you all have seen uh, the largest growth of any of the sort of public safety components there, exclusive of detention, and I don't ever want to leave them out, so I want to note that. But I guess my question to you is this, looking at where you're going in terms of the trajectory, and, and that's the same, by the way, for sworn and for sworn and civilian. You're at twenty-eight-point-five percent on sworn positions, um, since that time, whereas the police are at seventeen-point-four, and the sheriffs are at twenty-point-eight. So, with that, given the growth in the fire service over the last ten budgets, where do you see yourself needing to be in terms of a staffing? Wh- when do you hit that point that you say, we are fully staffed? Because I hear so many times, people say, Anarondo County, we haven't invested, we haven't done this, we haven't done that. And so, I'm just trying to understand, if we haven't, where do we need to get to? Because I see the trajectory, I see what we're on, I see the percentage increase, and I think fire has been the beneficiary of the most growth in terms of public safety positions. Um, so I guess that's my question, is, is what are you getting to? What's the target number?
Um, thank you for the data, um, the percents, and I, I will say, um, I'm, I'm not sure why the percent is so great for fire versus, um, other departments. Obviously, police and sheriff, I don't keep an eye on their numbers. Um, I would be curious to understand the deficit of all the public safety departments, um, and when those change of commands happen with different leadership. Um, knowing if we were in a greater deficit before I got here, then police or sheriff or corrections, um, I don't, I don't know if that makes a difference. So, not having all that historical data, uh, and knowing that coming in, so, I, I think we've gone through this a couple of budget cycles. I will never be able to give you a definitive number, um, because the growth of the community impacts the changes that we have. Um, the complement in the landscape of our water supply in the county changes our staffing model. There are some very small things that adjust what we do. Um, you know, my goal, like I said, is to go back to that NFPA standard and work on that staffing complement of three on an engine and four on a special services piece, which special services are ladder trucks and squads. Um, things like that, that you see that are not engines that just carry water. Fire engines carry water. Um, the other apparatus do different things. So, my goal is to continue to reach the staffing levels of three and four on those pieces. Um, but we see that when we build a station, a model changes. When there's a water supply thing, you know, there, a model changes. Uh, if we get a lot of growth in the area, such as we're seeing in Wall Chapel and Two Rivers and Gambros, um, I don't know if six, seven, eight years from now, we're going to need a, another station there. If Arundel and Watch Apple won't cut it, we'll have to add one. Uh, when we look at South County, we know we've seen studies that talk about potentially a station that could go into friendship, that would change the staffing model. Um, so, I, I know you desperately want a number, uh, and, and I can't, I can't give you one. Uh, maybe some of the other public agencies can say, you know, for public safety and law enforcement, we need six hundred and seventy-eight more police officers, um, right? I, you would probably scream to hear that number, but I don't know what that is, and, and I don't know that we have that. I think I would be giving you false expectations if I were to give you some grand number, that I don't have the data to support. What I can support is what I'm seeing in the next couple of years, as the environment and the geography and the staffing changes of what the needs are in the community. Um, ten years from now, if, if firefighters are, um, you know, mowing lawns and shoveling snow and, you know, repairing snow blowers, then I got a whole different challenge that requires a whole different staffing model. So, we, I, our job requires us to stay very flexible, um, and our main thing is meeting the needs of what the community needs for us. So, if I were to sit here and say, this is exactly what we need, I could be undershooting it or overshooting it, and that wouldn't be fair to the community.
I'm tracking. Can I quick follow up, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, please.
Thank you. So, I, I took the liberty of pulling up the population statistics from twenty-fourteen, and then from now. Um, and looking at twenty-fourteen to now, uh, we've seen about a six percent growth in population in the county. Went from about five hundred and fifty-nine thousand people, I won't get into the small numbers, to about five hundred and ninety-three thousand. So, we're just under six hundred. That's a six percent growth. The growth in the number of sworn positions went from seven hundred and eighty firefighters in fourteen to now you're going to be at ten eighteen, which is a thirty-one, that's thirty and a half percent, like I said. So, we've seen a five-fold increase over the population increase in the number of firefighters that we've added to the fire service. So, I, I think the reason that I'm asking this question is, one could argue, all the way back in twenty-fourteen, we were severely understaffed in terms of a fire department, right? And one could say, that starting point was just out of norm, like it was crazy. At this point, we've staffed up, we've gone five times greater than the population growth in terms of the staff-up number. So, then that's why I'm asking that question of, so where do you land? Because one of the things that I hear so often from others, speaking about the number of public servants that we need in different areas, is we have to keep pace with the population. speaking about the number of public servants that we need in different areas is we have to keep pace with the population growth. And if you look at the number of increased sworn positions versus the population growth, we're outpacing that as actually. And so that's why I'm asking this question, because I think we need to know where we're targeting to. Otherwise, we could just walk back and say, well, we just need to keep pace with population growth. And I don't think that's fair to the firefighters either, because if the starting point was so low, then it's not fair to say start at this very low number and artificially limit it to the population growth. You understand? That's why I'm trying to get that target number, because you, you literally can't know where you're shooting to if you don't know if the start point is good, the endpoint is good, and their trajectory is good. And, and it seems like we sort of are saying the start point was bad and the trajectory isn't enough, and we need to get somewhere, and we're not sure where. And that's the concern that I have is, is it seems like we're shooting out and we say, well, let's keep shooting, but we don't quite know exactly when we get there. If I'm going to the moon, I know when I get there.
Well, you will, but that's because somebody's going to tell you you're on the moon. So.
That's fair.
Um, so I'm going to tell you, and I'm going to continue to tell you that we continue to make great increases and will want to do that. I think if we are only looking at population growth, um, y- you would be correct, but that's not really the model that we look at. Um, and so population growth alone wouldn't change a huge trajectory in what we're doing. It would certainly make a difference. Uh, but if you look at ten years ago, fifteen years ago, the amount of, let's just take active shooter calls, um, or any type of tragedies that we are seeing and living on a daily basis. Fire and EMS were not involved in those calls. Those were SWAT, those were police. The amount of calls that we take on and the amount of different job opportunities that we do, we're fully integrated. We have rescue task force teams, they're consistently training on that. Those calls are no longer law enforcement. So the, some of the biggest changes that you're seeing are the job descriptions of what public safety do. There is no clear line between law enforcement and fire and EMS and dispatching and communications. All those lines have blurred, uh, and they have blurred so much that they are tightly woven at this point. So the biggest change for me are things like our maritime. When I came in, our maritime fleet was really, really in a bad position. Um, if you all didn't know, Anarundo County as a fire department has the most coastline of any fire department in the country. And we were the most efficient maritime and water rescuing group, um, that I had seen in a long time with a lot of my partners across the country. So to have the most coastline to take care of the community, that's a whole different avenue of operations that we have to be staffed and ready to deal with. Uh, and we do, we do a very good job as we're trying to make increases on that side of the house. So population increase is one thing. We're seeing a diversity and types of call, and then we are seeing a tremendous increase in call volume. If you were to go back and look at our call volume for fifty years ago, fifteen, ten, twelve, uh, you know, whatever you want to look at, we're seeing the increases there. But the discipline of what we do has been the greatest challenge for our staffing.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm definitely grateful, uh, over the last few years that you, you guys have grown. I remember there were some, some of the, uh, uh, positions that have grown over the last, you know, decade. Uh, we had that safer, we had the grant, uh, that we baked into our, uh, baseline budget now to sustain that. Uh, simply because, you know, I, I, I certainly believe that, uh, you know, having uh, the, a proper amount of, of firefighters to, and EMS, I should say, uh, department, department staffed at appropriate level to make sure that, you know, the, the, the main job, I do nothing else in this besides pass a budget. Uh, nothing else in its, in this job as a councilman. It is certainly to protect and provide safety for our citizens uh, outside and, and then educating them. And so, uh, because I think those are two fundamental things of, of s- certainly local, local government that we're responsible for. So, uh, I, whatever that number is, uh, public safety, well, would be super important. I think I see Madam Vice Chair, your hands up. Let's go ahead and go switch over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Chief, I just want to, um, thank you so much for your leadership, your ability to answer these questions. They're very important, the context around. Um, sometimes we can, we want to make, um, all of this simple, and it's just not. I mean, we know we've had maybe six percent population growth, but we know that we have an aging population in Anarundel County too. And obviously with you guys performing eighty percent of your work in basic life safety and advanced life safety, we know with an aging population, that's just going to increase. So I really, I really do appreciate your ability to answer all these questions. I think you are doing a tremendous job. Um, and I just wanted to acknowledge, I, I just wanted to acknowledge that ability to to answer these, um, questions, um, intelligently and articulately. I, I, I just applaud you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions from, uh, colleagues? I don't see any hands up. All right. Well, thank you, Chief, for your, uh, wisdom. Uh, we certainly, we're, none of us are, are firefighter experts. I mean, I'm certainly not. I'll, I'll be the, the first to admit that. And so we depend on you all being, uh, the, the smees, the subject matter experts on, on this topic. And so we're, we're literally taking our advice and guidance fr- from you all. So, um, uh, thank you for providing that. So there are no other questions. We will now transition, I think, to capital. Not sure, is that, is that, that's what's on the agenda, right?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Chair, if I may just take one moment to acknowledge, of course, Mr. Volkey, we know, has joined the meeting, misled voters also here. I did not, we did not get the opportunity to say good morning to them, but we do now have all seven council members here.
Awesome. And so we will now switch to Naomi, uh, McAllister, who will, uh, go deep diving into the, uh, capital, capital budget.
Uh, yes, Naomi McAllister, I'm the capital budget anal- analyst. Um, I believe Chief Wilford has integrated, um, the capital component into her presentation. There was one slide which was basically a summary slide. Um, are we able to, to go back to that? I'm not sure who has access to the presentation.
I can pull it up if you need me to share this. Uh, I don't see.
Yeah, I, I, um. Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, so as the chief indicated, fiscal year, uh, twenty-four has no new projects coming online. Uh, we do have the recurring capital projects at the top there, uh, the repair and renovation and the fire suppression tanks. And of course, indicated down below, you see the actual, uh, fire stations that are in the pipeline, um, that are in various phases of construction, planning and designing. Um, and then, of course, we have the fire training academy and the recurring capital project of infrastructure repairs. Um, and at this time, I would ask if anyone has any questions regarding any of these projects.
Yep, seeing no hands. Like we're, I think we're good. All right, Miss, uh, is that it for Naomi? Were you just doing the firefighter ones? Just?
Uh, yes.
Oh, okay.
What's next is DPW?
Yes, so, uh, now we will go to roads. Yes, uh, roads, bridges and traffic.
Good morning, distinguished council members. I'm Karen Henry, Director of Public Works. Um, we will be providing our general overview of DPW tomorrow when we talk about our operating budget requests. So today I want to focus on capital projects, and at this time I'd like to introduce my staff. Beth O'Connell, Deputy Director for Engineering. David Braun, Engineering Administrator and General Engineering. And there, uh, Alex Bakie, Deputy Director for Highways. And coming up later is going to be Rhodey Holdhouse for our solid Deputy Director of Waste Management Services to talk about the Solid Waste Fund request. Eric Michelson, Deputy Director for Bureau of Watershed Protection and Restoration. And Chris Murphy, Engineer Administrator for Utility Engineering. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Beth. Thank you.
Hi, good morning, um, Beth O'Connell, DPW. Um, I'm actually going to share my screen and.
Hey, DPW, I do have all of your presentations loaded and ready to go, so just let me know when you want them on the screen.
Okay, that's good. Great. So I'm actually going to turn it over to Alex Bakie, who will be running through first the C class, then the roads H class, and finally the traffic components. And then we'll hand it over to David Braun, who'll be doing the bridges. So, Alex.
Good morning, members of the council, and Sharon Smith, Alex Bakie, with the Bureau of Highways. And, uh, I, I see the utility operations slide deck at the moment, so, um, I'm hoping we can switch over to the Bureau of Highways. Terrific. Thank you very much. Um, so I will try and, uh, move through our presentation briskly. Please feel free to interrupt me at any time with a question. Uh, and with that, we can move forward to the first slide. And I'd like to just quickly provide, uh, the council with a quick summary of the Bureau of Highways' long-range capital plans and some of the operational changes that we're currently making. Uh, we currently, uh, have seven road maintenance facilities across the county. Six are staffed. We are looking to further, uh, reduce our staffing footprint and consolidate, uh, from six of those facilities down to three. And that aligns with some of the facility, um, improvements and requests that we'll touch on later. Uh, Southern District currently serves all of South County in the Annapolis Neck. That was funded in FYO eight. Provides a central hub to, to provide services to county residents throughout that portion of the county. We now have new naming. Uh, we are currently standing up Western District, and we have a new facility being built that was first funded in FY twenty-one to service all of West County. And then we have, uh, moved to Eastern, used to be Northern, uh, District, uh, where we hope to make future improvements, probably at the Mountain Road Facility to serve all of Eastern District. Very similar to Eastern District Police in terms of its, uh, arrangement geographically. Um, in addition, we are looking to consolidate all of our traffic engineering and maintenance operations and staff into a single modern data-driven traffic operations facility and requesting some funding for that in this budget cycle FY twenty-four. We also continue to invest through our multi-year capital program in ADA accessibility and compliance incorporating complete streets, uh, tenants, particularly incorporating bike-ped accommodations where we can. And, uh, a lot of our operations are certainly, uh, regulated through permits and, and law and state regulations. And we make sure that the county's road network and all its appurtenances are meeting the latest, uh, state and federal requirements. Next slide, please. Uh, this slide is just a quick overview of the projects that have some adjustments to funding, uh, with their corresponding budget book page numbers. Um, next slide. Okay, we'll start off with the traffic maintenance facility upgrade and relocation. The gray triangle to the left-hand side, you're looking bird's eye view down on our current traffic maintenance facility. It serves a number of purposes, has a fair amount of specialized equipment, um, traffic signs, all of our pavement markings, our signals. Um, and, uh, supported by our traffic engineering staff, all of those functions happen there. Immediately to the right is the St. Murray's Yard Road Maintenance Facility. It's all one piece of land. We're looking to re-in, uh, imagine and reutilize that existing infrastructure and property. But to, uh, develop, uh, concepts for location design for a modern traffic facility that brings both of those teams together. Traffic engineering from heritage, traffic maintenance sta- staff that is there at that campus, and bring, uh, in the technology that's really important us, for us to deal with congestion and corridor management on all the major roadways across the county. That would be the hub for that, uh, connected by fiber optic to office emergency management and other, uh, county functions for, to integrate, uh, our communication um, and enhance, um, integration with, with, with intelligent traffic control systems. To the right is just a schematic from Prince George's County of their, their traffic operations facility. Um, and we are currently in FY twenty-three engaged with a consultant performing a study to look at what are the actual needs of the facility, what are the space requirements and what are the costs involved? Uh, and we're engaged in that process right now. Next slide, please. Uh, additional start salt storage capacity, we've been working on for a number of years as we reached the end of life for existing, uh, salt barns. We're replacing them but with a larger barn. Um, the county currently has a stall, storage capacity of about four and a quarter tons per lane mile. We're always wanting to maintain five or more tons per lane mile. Uh, every year, the county lane mileage increases. So we have to keep that in mind. And as we, uh, replace barns, uh, we are, we again are just replacing them with a larger barn, which reduces our cost per ton for storage. Um, the increase is a result of, uh, just the current updated cost estimates and fiscal analysis from the prior approved funds. Um, and I will say this is complemented by our strategies to reduce salt usage, um, across the county so that, uh, we aren't necessarily needing to build more, uh, or overbuild, but just what the county needs to be resilient through, uh, severe winters. Next slide. The West County Roads Yard, uh, has completed design phase. It is currently in the uh, procurement process. Um, so we've moved for, into the solicitation phase for design build prime contractor. Uh, we project occupancy March twenty twenty-five. On the left-hand side, you'll see the old facility of Duckens Road, Duckens Street, uh, that's boxed in red. Uh, that older facility has completed its phase one environmental assessment. And then to the right, you will see a schematic at the Millersville landfill, which was the selected, uh, site for the new facility to be built. And that provides great, uh, access to major roadways, waters, sewer, electric, uh, complements, uh, already existing county operations there of a light industrial, um, type. And, um, we have an adjusted request based on updated project estimates uh, and deferring the prior approved, uh, funding, uh, from twenty-four for furniture and fixtures, pushing that out of year two FY twenty-five. Next slide. Okay, so that completes sort of the facility, um, projects, and then I have a few to highlight for you that are H-class road and bridges. Uh, a new request is Marley Neck Boulevard road improvements. And the, the challenge is there is that Marley Neck has been subject to extensive development in the last decade, Ten Year Springs being a great example. And that roadway and that corridor is a patchwork of widens and laden drops. Makes it very hard operationally to have consistent lane markings and provide for safe travel. Ultimately, the road needs to be looked at for its, its ultimate final cross-section design. And we need to be able to, um, plan for, uh, and do some additional, uh, schematic design development to see, uh, how can we implement that cross-section? Are there any additional right-of-way, uh, acquisitions that may be taken? And, um, so we're looking to do that design development and are asking for some funding in FY twenty-four for that work with projected future needs and FY twenty-seven for actual, um, improvements in the out use of the program. Next slide. Also new, uh, is Shore and Beach Road improvements. Uh, to study Shore and Beach Road and the Titan Beach Road intersections, to the right-hand side, you'll see some schematic designs that are looking to, uh, uh, how do we improve that roadway and also incorporate some bike-ped facilities, drainage, um, and improve safety and efficiency of the traveled section, uh, through the corridor. We had a highway safety improvement study that is highlighted on the left-hand side in red in FY twenty-two. We're looking to follow up in twenty-four with some design development work. Next slide. Pleasant Plains Road, uh, existing project. Uh, we have an increase based on the actual costs needed to fund, uh, utility relocations. Primarily, again, this came out of a highway safety improvement study where we had a lot of running off the road accidents, uh, and conflicts with the adjacent utility poles. So this is looking to improve the safety in that corridor. Next slide. And over road site distance improvements, again, a highway safety improvement study. If you look to right-hand side, you'll see that all the red is all of the driveways and entrances, um, along that corridor that don't meet, uh, ASHTO standards for site distance. Uh, there are geometric challenges, vegetation challenges, uh, access challenges, uh, utility relocations that are needed in that corridor. So, uh, it required, uh, coming to a standalone capital project, and we have a funding request for those utility relocations in FY twenty-four. Next slide, please. Outing Avenue retaining walls was an outgrowth of the improvements, uh, at the adjacent, uh, wharf, uh, Glen Green Haven Wharf that, uh, identified the primary access road with failing retaining. with failing retaining walls along both sides. It's very challenging topography where the road sits low with slopes going upward on each side. Uh, this project, um you can see the area in the red circle in the middle graphic on the right-hand side is a quick uh schematic design, the green lines to the proposed locations of new retaining walls. Uh, we're trying to maximize staying within the existing right-of-way and minimizing any right-of-way acquisition as well as uh selecting the right kind of wall system uh to allow both two-way traffic and on-street parking for adjacent residences. And we think we can achieve all of those goals. And so we have a small increase uh based on the updated project estimates. Next slide. Uh, that brings us to uh Bureau of Highways multi-year capital investment projects for the uh, you know, the road network writ large across the county. I'll start with the masonry management program. And I just wanted to highlight a new project this year, which is the state road sidewalk maintenance and repair. And you'll see the modest request to the right. Um, that is a result of uh clarification of the county's obligations under state law where a- a long state roads within the county um boundaries. Uh, sidewalk maintenance repair is the localities for responsibility. So you will see highlighted uh to the left lower uh chart on this slide, sidewalk along state roads, we just assumed approximately seventy-seven miles of sidewalk responsibility uh to the county's uh asset inventory as well as some uh multi-use pathways along state roads, approximately eight miles. So this provides some dedicated funding to meet our obligations under state law. We're not required to reconstruct. But during the service life of a sidewalk, we are responsible for its care and uptake. In addition, we uh continue to invest with our masonry reconstruction uh program, which is going into those areas um with aged typically D-rated or less masonry and reconstructing. Uh, we also deal with a lot of trip hazards um across the county and other masonry needs. Curb and gutter that may be failing and our ADA right-of-way compliance project which is heavily focused on curb ramps, but also will have responsibility for sidewalks as well. Um, and we will have more information coming out uh via dedicated ADA compliance webpage for that work done within the public right-of-way uh in the short, very near future. Excellent. That next brings us to the pavement management program, a series of four capital projects, which you can see, we really appreciative of the one-time approval of uh additional funding above the approved program. And that helps the Bureau of Highways stay on schedule and meet community uh expectations. So we have our road resurfacing, our road reconstruction. We have some funding from the Runder Mills uh LDC uh target area and our alley reconstruction program uh which has been in motion in the last few years with some good news. All one hundred alleys will be completed two years early. So this is the final year of our request. Um, you will not see that in twenty-four, five and twenty-six, which was the original projection. Uh, so that's a good news story there. And um you can see our our backlog still remains. Uh, so we have made some progress uh in terms of reducing the backlog as well as meeting the current schedule. Next slide. This is just another view to to visualize the the county's road network and the investments that we are making. The blue area of the graph is our local roads, followed by collector and art trails in green with purple being the entirety of the road network. And then this is broken down within five-point gradations for pavement condition index. So we really work hard to invest in all of those types of roads and keep them at our goal of seventy-seven or better as an overall road network rating and to continue to chip away at the backlog of a hundred and fifty-four million based on current modeling. That includes both pavement and masonry. So you might see us investing in in Sun Valley and Maryland City and Glen Burney Park. And those areas where roads have reached the end of their life, it really can't be uh improved or extended. Um, but we will go in there right-of-way to right-of-way line and tear it all out and rebuild it. Um, Councilman Volkey, I'm sorry, I'm just seeing your hand raised at the
You're good. I think we probably just keep going, Mr. Barkey, because I don't see the chair to recognize me, so.
Let him get through the end of it and then I'll forget.
I will, I will follow that lead. Very good. I think we're close to wrapping up anyway. And then I'll be happy to answer any questions we may have. So just to just wrap it up, I wanted to mention the traffic control program, which again is a se- a group of projects which you can see on your 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 screen. Uh, for the most part, they are per program with no requested increases throughout the program. The exception being guardrail. We have some larger roadways such as East West Boulevard that really needs the entirety of its guardrail system uh replaced. That is in the non-galvanized sort of brown-coated uh guardrail. Um, so we're requesting a little bit of an increase in funding. Uh, this year, we will probably come back to you and ask for the same next year, just so that we can go after the backlog of uh guardrail and then return to the uh approved program. And that's it for traffic control and uh welcome any questions from the council. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Rookie, if you wanted to.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Barkey, I I guess unusual question for me, but what are you gonna do to address the backlog? Because I, you don't have enough money, it seems like, to deal with it on the road improvements. You you sort of have highlighted that for you to maintain stasis is thirty point five million. That's your ask. Last year, that's your ask. This year, you continue to have a hundred and fifty-four million dollars in backlog. And I don't see how you're gonna be able to get ahead when you all are sort of just churning water. So is there a plan? What do you need to be able to start attacking that backlog? Because that's this is a a concern that I hear from constituents a lot about is can roads, road condition and what what sort of their thoughts are on that. I know you all, I know the entire pavement management group works very hard to try to manage the budget that you have and do as much as you can with it in the places where it's most efficient. I've had all that explained to me, so I appreciate that. But I I'm just looking dollars and cents. You've got a hundred and fifty-four million dollar backlog. If you're maintaining it thirty point five and you're getting thirty point five, then we're not touching the backlog. How do we, how do we get about that?
Sure, uh, Councilman Volkey, thank you for the question. Uh, I I'll be honest, it's a, it's a real challenge. Um, our our highest priority is to make sure that we are effective at maintaining stasis, that the road network doesn't start to slide to the left and degrade. Because there just are not enough dollars to 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 dig out of any hole that we might allow to develop. So that's our our biggest mission. Is to be as efficient with the dollars that we're given, make sure that we maintain the 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 huge investment in the county's road network. Uh, that it's serviceable, it's open, it's effective and it's safe. Um, we do make a little progress year over year on the backlog. Uh, you see us trying to stretch our dollars as much as we can so that we can continue to continue to do that. Uh, we will be present in five subdivisions doing reconstruction work, which is really that backlog piece this fiscal year. We will be in thirty subdivisions in the next five years doing that kind of work. We can only do fourteen lane miles a year, essentially of that really expensive type of work. Uh, that means that I can't move the needle very much on the backlog. A little bit, it's a glacial process. If there was more funding available to invest, we could do more. And we could buy that down. Uh, we simply are focused on doing what we can with the resources provided.
Ask a brief follow-up, Mr. Chair.
Nope, please, please do.
Thank you. Uh, so understanding that, and that was, I'm glad you said the way you did, because my follow-up question to you was going to be, is it a product if you don't have enough contractors, you don't have enough sort of people to do the work, or is it a money problem? And if you had more money, you could get more contractors and do more work. Um, so with that fourteen lane miles per year, that's based on current funding or that's based on the workforce?
That's a terrific question. It is in fact based on funding. There were years where we had capacity limitations. We have changed our procurement process and gone to task order-based contracting so that we can onboard multiple contractors and let tasks. That has expanded the bureau and the department's capacity to do that kind of work. So now that we have that in place, I believe that is no longer a limitation and it would be strictly a funding limit.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure.
And now I think uh we have Ms. Fiedler, she wants to jump in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good to see you, Mr. Barkey. Um, I'm gonna jump right into your uh dovetail on Mr. Volkey's question. I know the General Assembly um let two sessions ago um passed legislation regarding the highway user revenue fees and the distribution to the counties. Are you seeing the impacts of that? And if so, how much?
Well, that that was a huge change many years ago where that was obviously reduced in terms of the distribution share to localities. Seeing that uh start to come back is a is a big win. Ultimately, uh, those funds will go to the general fund and get re-appropriated through the budget process. So uh, we we will see that and we have some additional funding uh in this budget uh for the pavement management program that is helping us both uh make progress and deal with the cost escalations that we've seen. But it, but I don't have direct control over the HR funding. It just comes through the budget.
Understood. I I can appreciate that. And um, I know, I feel like I've gotten many lessons over the years in the different types of preventative maintenance you all do to extend the life of our roads. And I appreciated the um tutoring sessions along the way. Um, if I may, Mr. Chair, just ask some additional questions. Okay, thumbs up. Um, so I went to the appendix to look at the sidewalk project list. Um, and I did not see Shore Acres Road on there. Where, where is that road? This is a a road that um I thought would be in this budget to get a sidewalk this year. Um, in the previous two budgets, I know that they were, that road is, was at the top of the list or nearing the top of the list. Um, any information on that one?
I will have to get back to you, Councilwoman. I, off the top of my head, don't know where we, where we stand on that project.
Okay, yeah, that would be um very helpful information. And then just to confirm status on two projects. West um, West County Road Ops, that is only to outfit the building. The construction is that was in the previous budget. I just want to confirm that.
Uh, correct. The construction funding was in a previous budget. Uh, this year's ask is the balance of the project estimate. And what was furniture and fixtures sort of at the end was pushed to twenty-five.
Perfect. And then um final project question, it looks like for the jumper, jumpers, whole road project, say that five times fast. Um, we are just doing right-of-way in this budget.
That's my understanding. Uh, Dave might, David Braun might be able to help me with that one.
Uh, Councilman Fiedler, uh, I'm sorry, we have two sections of Jumper Soul Road in the budget. Which one are you referring to?
The road improvement with the um multi-use or shared use path.
That's in the Benfield Kinder area?
Yes, yes.
Um, yeah, that um, let me check real quick here. I'm sorry. The um, did we, that, that's a multi-pronged thing that we've already had some funding in place on. And then this year, we're looking at the uh, at um, making sure we've got enough on the cost estimates. Um, but yeah, that's all for the right-of-way work this year, that funding.
Okay, great, thank you.
And uh, I was gonna ask about Endover Road. Uh, any, any updates on the Endover Road project?
Let's see here. Um.
I can, I can jump on that one now.
Sure, thank you. I was look pulling up my information.
Um, we actually are just finishing the right-of-way acquisition on that. So we should be uh pursuing to uh advertise to bids here in the next couple of months.
Check. Okay, thank you. Think I see you said, Mr. Volkey?
It is. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so going to a couple of things in my district. Um, there is the new Marley Neck improvements. Can you just tell me a little more about what the plan is there? I'm I'm really excited to see that in the program. I think that's gonna be great for that community because they've had those same concerns. And they saw what happened on Solly Road. Now they say, well, why haven't you fixed Marley Neck? And I I understand those are two different things because the developer did Solly, but it looks nice over there now. And so I think people on Marley Neck are asking that same question. So and you're exactly right with the patchwork. I mean, that's, we get that complaint a lot. So just high level, what what is the plan for what you're gonna do on that road?
Well, I'd say very generally, um, we, we will create a schematic design level conceptual work to say, what can we do to make that a consistent corridor from top to bottom?
Okay.
Um, and what does that entail? Sidewalk, road section, drainage? All, can we meet all the requirements? ADA, you know, accessible pedestrian signals, the whole, the whole uh, you know, are there opportunities for bike-ped improvement? Um, so we will put all of those ideas out and see what fits, what we can design and what that ultimate cross-section is and see that we can uh go after, then follow on projects and come back to you and ask for that funding to say uh now that we have good uh design uh that's workable, we want to move to uh fund construction. And we can go in there and build out those sections that are deficient at this time.
Okay. So then to follow up on that, one of the things noted in the budget page, uh which is page two twenty-four is that this project is a hundred percent eligible for impact fees from District Two. But I don't see the funding sources being District Two impact fees. It looks like it's all general county bonds. Is that gonna change in a subsequent budget or was there not enough in the impact fees for District Two? I'm just trying to understand the funding source there.
Uh, if I may, Naomi McAllister, Capital Budget Analyst. Uh, yes, it does qualify for impact fees. I'd have to check to see what the balance is in the particular district to confirm that. Uh, generally, we don't use impact fees the first year of a capital project. We like to see it a little further along in the process. Um, but I can definitely look into that and get back to you.
If you don't mind, thank you. Mr. Chair?
Yep, please.
Okay, so then switching to a different project that is getting impact fees from District Two, which is the Jumper's Hole, the other Jumper's Hole project between uh Route Two and Route One Seventy-Seven. So on that project, can you all update me on the status of that? Because I know there was a budget amendment that we did last year that noted there needed to be access improvements for the Woodhome community. But then I think subsequently, there may have been um some changes to the area over there. And so that may then impact your ability to move forward with the project. That is at least what I had heard from some constituents. So I'm just trying to understand where the status of this project sits and what if any impediments you faced.
David Braun, uh Bureau of Engineering, again, I can address that, Mr. Volkey.
Sure.
Um, we, the, the project itself, right now, we're working on getting the consultant onboard to do um the design and the studies that are needed. And you're right that the um the access to Woodhome, uh, we basically committed to the area that um that would become part of the project. And that we weren't just gonna let it, let it disappear. Um, so that is one of the first things that the uh consultant will start looking at when he's um, when they, when they get to the work, which hopefully will be starting this summer.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, uh, are there any additional questions from uh colleagues? I don't see any additional hands, so uh, thank you. Uh, we'll now transition to, so navigate this, um a solid waste. And water protection uh and restoration.
Um, I have one more section under the roads and bridges.
Oh, please, please.
Um, and this, this won't take long. Um, but we do have a separate section in in here with the the bridge projects. The uh, ju- just as a general background, uh, next slide, please. Thank you. Um, the, our, our, our inventory of bridges is currently at eighty-eight. There are two more that are under construction by a development that'll be added once that's um, once those are completed. Um, every one of these structures is expected a minimum of every twenty-four months uh to address various uh criteria uh to develop a rating for the bridge. Uh, bridges that have certain aspects rated poor or fair um are eligible for eighty percent construction funding. And currently, right now, um the, the scale is basically poor, fair and good in in figuring out where the bridge ratings fall on the federal scale. Um, we have six that are rated four. All six of those are currently in our program or being requested to add this year. Um, and that, the list of those six are the uh, on with the capital project number that they're being uh worked on under is is shown there at the bottom. Uh, next slide, please. So we have three new projects this year uh for our bridge program um that I'll do. That I'll do a quick little summary for each of these next slide. The culvert invert paving project, that's on page two hundred and twenty seven of the budget book. This basically provides invert paving right now for five identified metal pipe culverts. This is this is a deterioration that's found during the regular inspections that are done. And these culverts that qualify for this project basically can be receive some of this rehabilitation without having to go through a full replacement at this point, and hopefully can increase their service life upwards of twenty to twenty five years. The five that are included are listed there on the slide. We have a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars in the FY twenty four program for the design of this paving, invert paving. Next slide, please. And this is just to give you an example, it's the type of work that's done under this program. Picture on the left is an existing structure that has deteriorated. This is basically the inside of the corrugated metal pipe that has deteriorated away and is then basically is exposed to either the outer surface or in some cases all the way through to the ground outside the pipe. The picture on the right is the is an example of the first one of these that we've completed this last year up on Hospital Drive. The by pouring the the concrete invert through this basically recreates a a suitable invert for the pipe and should last longer than the corrugated metal did in those conditions. And doesn't require then the full metal pipe to be replaced. Next slide, please. Second new project is a structure on Town Center Boulevard over Tributary of the Severn Run. Looking to replace or rehabilitate the existing two cell culvert there. Again, FY twenty four funding in the program here is for the design of this. Next slide. The the structure itself is shown in the picture on the left. And similar to what you saw on the the previous new project request for the invert paving. This is an extreme example of the deterioration of the invert of the pipe that's required. This has gotten to the point here where it requires a full rehabilitation of this structure. And the culvert and how that gets done will be part of what we deal with during the design to figure out how the extent of of what we have to do on the structure itself. Next slide. And the third new project is Protection Road over Little Protection River. This one is basically a rehabilitation of the bridge deck and some structure repairs. It will not be a full replacement of the bridge. Again, FY twenty four funding is for the design. And next next slide, we'll show you a couple of photos of the deterioration primarily to the concrete in these areas, both the the deck and fittings and railings around the deck. And then also the the structure spalling concrete going as far as the exposed rebar. On that abutment that's shown in the middle there. Next slide. So the other funding changes in the FY twenty four program are kind of outlined here. Most of them are 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 just scope changes, additional work needed on the design phase. A couple I'll highlight though. The McKendry Road project. We actually applied for and were granted approval of a hundred percent federal funding on that project through a new program that the state and the federal program introduced last year. So the county share of the construction here will be going down, even though the current construction cost estimate is increasing. And the other one is the Governor's Bridge Road over Protection River. This was has been in here for a while, kind of pending decisions on the direction of that structure that has been closed since twenty fourteen, I believe. Last fall, we finally came to an agreement with Prince George's County on how to move forward with that. And they are requesting the design funding for this project in their CIP under our MOU with Prince George's County. This is a bridge that is shared. But they have the responsibility of doing that work and then Panerono County reimburses them for half of their costs that that aren't federal funded. So Prince George's County is adding this to start design in FY twenty four, currently anticipating construction beginning in FY twenty seven on that. I think that's the last slide. There might be one more, but again, they're they're binary increases to the design costs. So that that's all I have. Be glad to answer any questions.
Yeah, see, Ms. Picker. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Baki. I just before we move on, I wanted to ask about the status of the Glen Burnie Town Center Street whole replacement project. I believe that's in a catchall category on page two seventy nine of the budget book. I know it's I don't before we just moved on to other. Wanted to see if I get an update.
You muted, Alex.
Thank you, Councilwoman Picker. Thanks for the question. It has been a little bit of a challenge just coordinating the stakeholders and and working with the state to to move the 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 streetlight project forward if I'm I'm hearing you correctly. What I'd like to do is have Nestor Flores, our Chief of Traffic Engineering, send you an update so that we can be a little more complete about where we are in the schedule. But I think we're we're pretty close to to making forward progress.
Forward progress, meaning they're actually going to be put in the ground?
Yes, that is the goal. Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, I see no additional hands. We can now transition over to solid waste.
So Chairman, this is Eric Michelson, Deputy Director of the Bureau of Watershed Protection and Restoration. It's actually supposed to be stormwater and of water quality management. I think solid waste or waste management is coming after us. There's a spelling error in the agenda.
Okay, yeah, yeah. What I see here is solid waste management and watershed protection and restoration.
Right. I think somebody interpreted SW as solid waste as opposed to stormwater.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so waste management rodeo will be up afterwards. But thank you for the opportunity to speak, Chair Smith and and County Council. I'll be talking about the requests for the Bureau of Watershed Protection and Restoration, the B class projects. Next slide, please. Okay, so just to to give a little bit of a primer, particularly for the new council members. So the the Bureau of Watershed Protection and Restoration is focused on a variety of efforts in including continuing to implement the county's clean water projects to assist in the county meeting its clean water regulatory requirements under its state and federal water quality permits, its MS four permit with MDE and the Chesapeake Bay TMDL. And we do this through a variety of stormwater practice retrofits, outfall restoration and stream and wetland construction. We're also working on innovative ways to engage the private sector and helping the county meet these clean water goals. And then we are working with others, including Matt Fleming at the Resilience Authority to pursue climate resilient stormwater solutions in communities impacted by increased runoff or inadequate stormwater infrastructure. So our FY twenty four requests, it's about twenty million dollars above the recurring program. Much of this is associated with construction phase increases associated with projects that are already in the design and permitting pipeline. So just sort of building out the construction phase elements of those projects. And of that request, about six point two million dollars is recognizing outside funding sources, including the the Dean R Trust Fund and a federal grant, and I'll talk a little bit more about this as well. And then this year, this request actually continues a secondary wave of water quality treatment projects that was initiated last year. We are in the we are in the second year of our permit cycle with MDE and basically now requesting funding for design of projects that will either be accomplished by the end of that permit term or in anticipation of our next five year permit term. Next slide, please. So the 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 white projects in this table are existing projects where there are new requests. The the top three projects are essentially as programmed. Culvert enclosed storm drain rehabilitation, which is handled by our stormwater infrastructure protection group, basically allows them to continue to inspect and repair existing closed storm drain infrastructure throughout the county. We have an emergency storm drain account that similarly allows us to respond to emergencies as there are failures or sinkholes or other kinds of issues that open up. And then we've got a countywide stormwater drainage and stormwater management infrastructure account. Again, that allows us to be able to do work in a pipeline that we've created in terms of maintaining that stormwater infrastructure. We have two other projects that are ongoing, projects that have been successful or heavily utilized by the community. A restoration grant program that we run through the Chesapeake Bay Trust, which is the nonprofit organization funded in part through the Chesapeake Bay license plates. We give them about a million dollars a year, have for the past five or six years that they basically provide out to the community watershed or nonprofit organizations that are doing restoration work that the county can claim credit for. And so that's been a really successful program. Additionally, we have a a program that I'll talk a little bit more about as well, our public private performance of water quality improvements. This is essentially a design build program that we have had for a number of years where we put out an RFP on an annual basis. Firms come back to us essentially with private, excuse me, projects proposed on private properties. We evaluate them based on their effectiveness to the county and their technical merit and have been able to really achieve pretty incredible cost reductions and and implementation acceleration with that with that mechanism. And then we're asking for another two million dollars in that project for the coming year. There are four new projects where we are requesting additional funding. I'll talk a little bit about those in more detail as we get into the next set of slides. Next slide, Naomi. Okay, these are the existing projects that I mentioned where we are requesting additional funding. These projects have been in the capital budget for a number of years. And we're getting into a construction phase where, as a result of refined engineers' cost estimates or simply arriving at the point where we're ready to construct these projects, we're we're asking for additional funding. I apologize, the nomenclature for the the program when the program was originally set up is a little bit cryptic. But on the right hand column there, you see the actual location of these projects throughout the county and the and the waterways that they're associated with. Next slide, please, Naomi. These are, this is just one example of the kind of infrastructure projects funded through our B fifty five sixteen and B fifty five seventeen projects. This is Shore Way and Arnold. We've worked closely with Councilwoman Fiedler on this one in Pines on the Severn. There are lots of areas in in the county where the communities were developed really before any kind of even conveyance stormwater proper conveyance stormwater infrastructure existed. So we're oftentimes left trying to make the best of a bad situation that we can. This is a case where the road network in Pines on the Severn is largely the stormwater conveyance system. And this is the bottom of that system where it drains into Chase Creek and and water had been flowing through this alleyway. We were able to work with the community and the adjacent neighbors to 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 work on a solution that everybody was satisfied with, provide a little bit of a water quality treatment at the end of this before the water gets into Chase Creek. And and now there's currently actually an effort going on where the the drinking water system is being replaced in the community as well. And we're working hand in hand with our Bureau of Engineering and Highways Department to make sure that that some of the remaining stormwater issues are addressed as a result of that reconfiguration. Next slide, please. We are requesting a million dollars in this year's budget as part of a septic to sewer subsidy issue, our our effort. Our Bureau of Utility Operations and Bureau of Engineering have been working for the past several years to pursue or to to see if there are communities that are interested in sort of broad scale conversion from septic to the public sewer network in areas where that can be managed or where they're close to existing infrastructure. And one of the challenges that we've collectively found is that it's very difficult to get communities on board, in part because the costs are fairly high for that for that kind of conversion on a house by house basis. And so the idea here is that this septic to sewer work is eligible for for permit attainment, both in terms of our MS four permit, our stormwater permit, and then the Chesapeake Bay TMDL. And so there's an avenue potentially for us to include funding here to help defray some of the the private costs for broad scale connection. This is this photograph is actually from a a commercial connection along the I ninety seven corridor where some of the properties owned by St. John's properties were converted from septic to sewer as part of our actual public private improvement of water quality program. But that's something that there's a lot of interest in countywide and in a county with forty over forty thousand septic systems. Addressing those as a pollutant source to our local waterways is a big issue and we look forward to being able to cooperate with our utility folks on this effort. Next slide, please. So this is an interesting one. The county was part of a class action lawsuit against Monsanto who at some point in the distant past was a manufacturer of PCBs, which are toxic substances that were oftentimes associated with the production of transformers and other kinds of industrial uses. As a result of that, the county has received over five million dollars as part of that settlement. So this project is essentially all outside money. It is a holding account for those settlement funds that will be used by our program as well as potentially by our Bureau of Utility Operations to address PCB issues throughout the county. Historically, we have spent our PCB monitoring efforts really through our operating account. And this will allow us to help reduce some of those expenditures in the future, just as an FYI. We're currently working with U M B C, who has one of the the most advanced U M B PCB monitoring and remediation programs in the country to look at sites both within the Baltimore Harbor and then the Puxent River, which are areas where the the county has PCB reduction strategies required by the state. So that, like I say, is all outside money. But a location for that funding to be received. Next slide. A couple of new stream and restoration and environmental restoration projects. This is Cattail Creek Stream and Wetland Restoration. One of the tributaries to the Magathie River. This is the area basically from Chart Ridge down to Route Two feeding the the Magathie River on Cattail Creek, running behind Oak Hill Elementary School in that area. It's an area where you can see from the photographs, there's some significant degradation. There has been significant environmental restoration efforts downstream by the Magathie River Association in the Berrywood Community. And then the the county actually owns quite a bit of land along this corridor as well as parkland. And so this will help protect those assets. Next slide, please. The Patuxent Oxbow Restoration. So this is a a natural resource feature actually on property owned by Recreation and Parks just adjacent to the Russet Community in West County. It's an enormous west wetland. It's a relic oxbow, which is sort of a section of the Little Patuxent River that was cut off as a result of the stream or the the river moving around over time. And over the course of the past several years, there has been significant erosion up from the main stem of the Little Patuxent River that you can see in that right hand photograph that is moving up towards the the wetland area. uh, that you can see in that right-hand photograph that is moving up towards the, the wetland area within the oxbow and threatening to, to basically de-water that wetland, which is a massive, um, environmental resource, uh, area for, um, uh, you know, the overflight of, uh, water fowl, as well as all sorts of other, uh, uh, interesting bio- biological organisms. Uh, and so we're working, um, with stakeholders in the community and the Maryland Department of Natural Resources, uh, to, to provide a long-term solution to protect that wetland area out in West County. Uh, next slide. I think that's probably the end of my slideshow. So, um, I'm welc-, um, you know, welcome. Any questions the council might have?
Uh, I see Ms. Fiedler. Go ahead and, uh, could jump in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Michelson, I just want to thank you for your presentation and for including Shoreway in, in that presentation. And if I think about all of the projects that we've worked on together in the last four years, that one really stands out. Um, it was incredibly unique and it just made such a difference to the community and those residents. So, thank you for including it.
Of course. Yeah. I mean, I think probably, uh, we've worked with, with most of the folks on the council. And again, we, we, you know, in the county, given the, the sort of age of a lot of the communities throughout the county, like I say, many were developed without even adequate conveyance infrastructure. I know in, in District Seven, um, there are lots of low-line communities where we're working. Maybe that's what council, Councilwoman Ledbetter has her hand up about. But, um, but it does provide some unique challenges. And I think in a lot of these cases, uh, we've found the communities pretty willing to be accommodating and, and to recognize, you know, the limitations of what can be done. Um, thank you.
Go over to Ms. Ravi, and I think I saw yours next, and then Madam Vice Chair after that.
Thank you. Um, I'll also echo the thank you for the presentation. Um, and I wanted to ask a little bit about, I think you alluded to this a little bit, but how are projects selected for the, um, uh, septic to sewer, um, uh, program?
So currently, the, um, again, th- this subsidy is really going to be plugged into a program that's being developed by our, um, Bureau of Utility Operations and Bureau of Engineering in terms of, um, working with communities that are interested in converting from sub- septic to sewer. So the way that process currently works right now is that, uh, there's a, there's a petition process essentially for the communities to come to the county and say, we're interested in, in pursuing this conceptually. Um, and so, you know, once we've got communities that, that are, have gotten a certain level of buy-in, uh, and that are interested in pursuing it, uh, really the way we're functioning at this point is trying to figure out how can, uh, folks in the Department of Public Works and to a certain extent, the Health Department, uh, help facilitate that? You know, what, what public dollars can we bring to the table? Whether that's, uh, Bay Restoration Funds that are often funneled from M D E through the Health Department or, um, subsidy dollars like these, or, you know, there's even been discussions in the past about maybe subsidizing a bit from the, the utility fund as well. So, um, really, uh, what we're doing and what our utility folks are doing at this point is, is doing, making the public aware that these avenues are here and that we're trying to make this process easier. Um, and then to, to have them essentially come to us and then figure out what we can do to make it uh, as painless as possible to, for them to move forward. And so this is, again, like I say, one step in that direction of, of making this a bit more palatable, um, uh, financially for those communities.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Sure.
And then Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you, Eric, for being here. I just wanted to ask about my, um, Clark Station Road resilient.
Yeah. So we, we're still in the midst of, uh, the design for that, uh, project. It's moving along as, as you, you are aware, um, as we got into the, the, the design and sort of assessment of the existing infrastructure, um, that's in that area. We recognized that some of the conveyance infrastructure under Clark Station Road was in, um, terrible condition. So we've, we, uh, last month executed an emergency repair essentially to replace the forty-two inch culvert under Clark Station Road. But, um, we've also, uh, been basically working with our stormwater infrastructure protection staff, uh, to make sure that, um, the infrastructure that does exist there is, is brought up to a standard that can uh, sustain itself until we come in with a larger project. But we, uh, we look forward to moving, um, forward with that one. And, and we're also working with Matt Fleming on that one as a potential project that we could get some outside resilience dollars for, since there is a, um, a flooding component to it. We believe that could be a project that could really be competitive for, uh, federal dollars potentially as we get into the construction phase, phase.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and then I see Ms. Ledbetter, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. Um, I actually, my question was, I wanted to follow up on, uh, Ms. Rodvy. And she actually asked one of the, the questions I had in mind. Um, but I want just a follow-up to that. The reach out, the communication to communities so that they know, has, has any thought process been given on what that type of communication might look like as you develop this new program? Um, to make sure that the communities know it exists, um, in order to, to raise their hand and put that petition in.
Yeah, tha- that's a great question. And our, our utility operations folks again have been doing really a roadshow for the past. Uh, Chris, I see Chris Murphy wants to weigh in there. Uh, Chris.
Yeah. So, so our, our, our Bureau of Engineering folks for, for utility engineering, we've actually reached out probably to thirty different neighborhoods, maybe more than that, uh, to go over the program with them, the, the septic to sewer program. Uh, we'd like to, we've gotten, um, looked to get funding from Bay Restoration Fund, uh, they recently increased that up to about twenty-five thousand dollars per septic to sewer connection they'd be willing to give. Uh, Eric's program would have additional funds, and then the, the utility fund is also providing funds into it. Uh, the problem, I think, I think the problem is that, you know, it's a, it's a voluntary, community voluntary basis. So it's a petition project. You know, it's, it's, we're competing with folks that have septic systems here that don't currently have any costs. And they're looking on taking on some costs, uh, with the, uh, with the connection. Um, so, you know, we've probably, um, between the money that we give the Bay Restoration Fund money, Eric's fund, uh, you know, we, we, we have a large portion of, of, uh, funds together. Um, but I think the average cost that we were looking at for a connection was around fifty-two thousand dollars, uh, for a connection. Um, that was, that was prior to this recent bout of inflation. So I don't know what the current, what the newest number is. That was, um, the last time we did it was about fifty-two thousand dollars. Plus, there's also the capital facility connection charge, which is another additional, uh, ten thousand dollars and the onsite cost that you might get, which is basically from the house to sewer clean out. Um, so all those costs added together, um, we've done sort of the best that we can. We, we've, um, extended the payback period from thirty years. Now we're outward, hours of forty years. Uh, we've put in some, uh, there's some legislation with deferment, um, to, uh, up to fifty percent of the cost, what they could defer. Uh, and then also there's some, uh, deferment, um, ability for, uh, those that are, uh, uh, disabled or elderly also. Um, but it's, it's tough to compete with, um, no cost that right now, well, perceive no cost right now to have for their septic system. Um, I, you know, there, there are some costs that we need to go ahead and, and, uh, explain to the folks that they did, that they're paying right now for the septic system, just maintenance, uh, potential cost for replacement. Um, we do have a, um, a ranking system put together for the septic to sewer program. Um, the only problem is we haven't had a, a, a successful petition yet, um, so, um, to, uh, go ahead and move one of these projects forward. So I hope that answered your questions.
If I may add, this is Karen Henry, Director of Public Works. So you asked about how we're getting out to the communities. We do have our consultant on board to help us with outreach. Um, so they are heavily involved with helping us get the word out. We are targeting specific communities that are in the critical area that meet all of the requirements that uh, we need in order to help us with the, um, meeting the, uh, T M D L requirements, um, and that sort of thing for nutrient remove, removal. So there are challenges, but we, we have outside help to help us get there.
Mr. Chairman, I ask a fa- quick follow-up?
Please, please.
And when you said that so far, there hasn't been a successful petition, what, what have been the, the reasons for the, you know, the, the, I guess it's ultimately a decline, um?
Yeah. And what, what, what I said, I, I, I guess I'm referencing specifically to the septic to sewer program. Uh, we have had successful petitions in the past. Um, yeah. Um, really, it's, uh, it, it has to go toward, to, to a vote. And fifty-one percent of the people have to say yes in order to move forward with the community. And it's, it's difficult to get that fifty-one percent or fifty percent plus one, should say that fifty-one percent, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all of your answers.
And then Ms. Hummer.
You're muted, it sounds like.
It looks like you're off mute. Perhaps your microphone and video did not connect up the way they should have when you joined the meeting? Try, give it a test.
I think, I think you, you just say, uh, just move on, or can you, you can text me your question if you have one. Yeah. So Mr. Voki, go ahead and I'll see your, I'll see your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Having been in the position Ms. Hummer's in before, it's a very frustrating position. So I'm sorry. I feel your pain. Um, so the million dollars for the study on the septic to sewer, I appreciate the conversation we've had on that already. And being somebody who is on a septic system, grew up on a septic system, um, knows a lot of the concerns that folks have about conversion, um, not just the cost, but also the, the other piece of it that, you know, growing up, I always heard this and I still hear people say it. Wherever the septic and water go, or wherever the sewer and water go, excuse me, development follows, right? And so a lot of times that opens up ability for lots that otherwise didn't have enough room for drain fields or couldn't perk or other diff- you know, reasons why development can't happen there. All of a sudden they can come in. So I guess what I want to understand is how much of a focus, and I get the environmental piece of it, but I also understand there's the development component of it too. How much of a focus is this for the department that we need to be spending a million dollars on this study to try to find more ways to get people to do something that they already have a lot of concerns about? Like, I'm just trying to understand the use of taxpayer dollars there to message into this, you know, idea that we're going to convince people to do something that they otherwise have significant reservations about.
So, so this actually isn't money for a study. This is money essentially that would be held back, um, in the case that we have a successful petition project and that these dollars would be contributed to, to a, the implementation essentially of that, of that project. So it assumes that you've got the community on board and that there's this general consensus that's there. And these dollars would, would be applied to that. And, and so the reality is in fact that this may be money that's not spent for a couple of years in terms of, uh, of that effort, but it's essentially money that we're showing a good faith effort to help defray those, uh, private costs potentially if there is a community that moves forward. So, um, there, there have been study efforts in the past, um, that again, utility engineering has pursued. But this money would be implementation dollars, uh, in the case that a community was ready to move forward. And I think, you know, obviously the, the, the point that you bring up is important, Councilman Voki. Uh, the, the one community that always comes to mind with this is Edgewater Beach in, in District Seven, um, where, you know, we did that analysis and we looked and I can't remember offhand exactly was it, what it was, but it might have been, there were, you know, five to eight lots essentially that had been undeveloped, that might be more developable if you had sewer there. But in the case of a community like that where you had a hundred homes or something like that, it was sort of a de minimis, um, impact. And that's not to say though, that there also haven't been sort of broader discussions about, you know, might the county also sort of, um, on the front end, do something to protect some of those lots? Because a lot of times those lots are also providing de facto stormwater management, the, the sumps or the areas that are already, um, fairly wet, or there's a reason why they're, why they haven't perked yet. And so those are all conversations and discussions that we're having in terms of, uh, what the impacts could be in these communities. And, and it's not just about nitrogen reduction necessarily in terms of the, the sewer and, uh, septic impacts.
Yeah, I appreciate that holistic view. Thank you.
If I could try it real quick. So the, the B R F subsidy wouldn't allow funds to go to, uh, an empty lot. Who has, the house has to be there before two thousand and eight. Um, the, the, uh, utility fund subsidy potential, um, that would also not go towards an empty lot. Um, and then the deferment is also not capable for an empty lot. So there's no, um, there's no additional benefits that we're giving because someone's in a petition area if you have an empty lot. Uh, but they still would be part of the petition area.
And this is Karen Henry, but just, and also to clarify, it has to already be in the master sewer plan. So we're not, I mean, parts of Pasadena, since you happen to mention that, are not in the master water and sewer plan. So i- if you wanted to, you know, petition, you would have an immediate no, because you're, you would, I don't know about you necessarily, but some of the people that are further down there in the peninsula, they would not be able to connect because there is no connection capability there.
Can I just follow up briefly, Mr. Chair?
Yep, please.
Yeah. So I, I'm at, I'm almost at the very end, so I'm way out of the plan and I'm okay with that. Uh, but that being said, there are some communities like Chelsea Beach for me and, and Magathie Beach where they're, they are in the plan at some point for, you know, planned future service. And those conversations I know have happened. I appreciate the clarification on the age of the property to be eligible for the funds. I guess the one quick follow-up that I have on that is this. So in the event that water and sewer does commit because the community petitions and those lots exist, though you wouldn't be eligible for any of the deferments or other things, you could still pay to connect that lot, right? Like you, that lot could still get into the planned service at that point.
Yeah.
Which would then make something that was otherwise, maybe this natural stormwater area, or it was doing something, you know, just kind of as a, a sink, if you will, to catch some of this outflow. Now all of a sudden that could allow that lot to be developed, which that's the concern I think that people have. So. But I appreciate the clarification all around on this. Thank you.
And I think I'll try to go back to Ms. Hummer to see if audio was corrected.
Let's hope. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. I switched to the laptop, so it's the desktop, but on my side it says it's working. Who knows? But anyway, thankfully a second device. Um, I wanted to say thank you. Y'all do amazing things with the stormwater issues all over the county that are a constant, you know, stream restoration do, and I'm always so impressed. Um, I took note of you, your, the project about the oxbow with the Tuscan River. And, um, I will say that that is literally in my backyard, um, right there. And so I'm very interested to, um, learn more about that project and what needs to be done. Eric, I'm going to put out there with you that I look forward to tramping around in the wetlands with you to show me exactly what needs to be done over there. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thanks.
All right. I don't see any additional hands. Uh, Erica, it is good to see you. I think we first met probably eleven, maybe eleven years ago when, when Chris Fitz was, was a kind of in your position that you're in right now, I believe. Um, and he was bringing you on board.
Chris brought me on board, but he was in Karen's position. Yeah, yeah, Chris. So yeah, nice seeing you again.
All right. Uh, uh, if, if no other questions, I believe we're going to transition over to, I got all these emails up. Um, is that waste management now or, or am I on the right page? Okay, waste management.
Naomi, are you going to bring up my slides?
I believe Laura's driving.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Thanks, Laura.
She's an excellent driver. Trust me.
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chairman, uh, Madam Vice Chair and members of the County Council. I'm Rhodey Holdhouse, Deputy Director with the Department of Public Works. Thank you for the opportunity this morning to present our project requests. Uh, next slide, please. So the waste management or end class projects are funded by the Solid Waste Enterprise, and they include projects to care for the enterprise's infrastructure as well as to develop capacity for recycling and disposal into the future. Uh, the Plan Twenty Forty Healthy Community Goals help focus our long-range planning strategy and program drivers. And together these inform our capital program. So the projects begin on page three ninety-seven of the Capital Budget and Program Book. And my presentation this morning includes seven projects with funding requests between F Y twenty-four and F Y twenty-nine. These are shown in the project class summary on page three ninety-seven. Uh, three are pro- prior approved projects where we are requesting funding for F Y twenty-four. That is a total of two point five million above the approved program, and I'll speak to that. Two projects are asking for funding in F Y twenty-nine, the new program year. And finally, there are two new project requests where funding is requested to be programmed at the end of the six-year program. Uh, I have one slide for each project, but I'm happy to take questions about any projects in the end class. Uh, I have one slide for each project, but I'm happy to take questions about any projects in the end class. Uh, next slide, please. So, uh, on page four oh one is our solid waste. I know we had some. Trouble with that acronym there, S W for solid waste or stormwater, but this is for solid waste project planning. And one of the reasons I believe the end class function so well is that we have a dedicated project to do planning and preliminary engineering. The, I mentioned the project is on page four oh one. It helps us meet regulatory requirements like our ten-year solid waste management plan. But it also lets us get very good scoping of future work. So this project is reimbursed when standalone projects are spawned from planning efforts. The work currently underway includes the ten-year solid waste management plan and an organics collection study. They won't lead directly to other projects to replenish N four two two seven hundred, so I'm requesting five hundred thousand dollars in FY twenty twenty-four. Next slide, please. Uh, on page four oh two is the solid waste renovations project. Uh, again, I mentioned that the enterprise is responsible for maintaining all of its facilities and infrastructure. And we do renovations based on program schedules of need. The solid waste renovations multi-year project has allowed us to extend the useful life of our three facilities, uh, by completing needed repairs and replacements. The, there's no change to the FY twenty-four request, but I am requesting to add one point four four million consistent with the program. To FY twenty twenty-nine, which is the, uh, the new program year. Next slide, please. N five three five four hundred is the landfill buffer expansion project on page four hundred and three. It's a land acquisition project that has been used for many years to acquire properties that share a common boundary with the landfill in Severn. Um, the landfill campus, we have asked. To keep sufficient project balance to purchase at least one property that might become available on our eastern boundary. As we develop and operate the landfill in that general vicinity. Uh, from the work of our Bureau of Engineering folks that acquire right of way, we've learned that two properties might be available in calendar year twenty twenty-three. I'm requesting to add one point three million dollars, which would give us the opportunity to acquire both properties if they become available. Next slide, please. Uh, N five seven eight eight zero zero is the Millersville Landfill Subcell nine point three design and construction project on page four hundred and four. Subcell nine three is the third phase of cell nine development. And design funding was approved in FY twenty-three and construction funding is programmed for FY twenty-four. We don't have any scope or timing changes, though construction costs for FY twenty-four, excuse me, are increased six hundred eighty-four thousand dollars. Based on current estimates, including inflation. The next slide, please. Page four hundred and five is the Millersville Landfill Cell Nine Landfill Gas, another acronym there, Design and Construction. This project is used to complete the phase design and construction of the cell nine landfill gas collection system as required by environmental regulations. The phase development includes installing temporary landfill gas collectors in active areas and then. Installing permanent landfill gas wells in completed areas. Our request for FY twenty-four is consistent with the program. We're requesting to add two thousand dollars to the FY twenty-eight program for design. And include one point three six nine million in FY twenty twenty-nine for construction. Um, so. Here's my little, my first new project, and you can see in the upper right corner there is the, is the little starburst there, so you, you know it's a new project request. It's N zero 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 four two four Millersville Landfill Resource Recovery Facility Maintenance Building Upgrades on page four hundred and six. Uh, the request is for four million two hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars to renovate and update the Millersville Landfill Maintenance Building at our main campus in Severn. And I'm calling it a maintenance building because that's one of its primary functions. It has three garage bays, a welding area, a lube storage room. It also has a central storeroom for the entire bureau. Uh, where we keep parts inventory. Uh, we have employee offices, locker rooms, a shared kitchen and lunchroom, O I T network equipment room for the campus. As well as employee parking and material storage areas. We did a planning study, uh, so this, this is, uh, one of the projects I kind of talked about that comes out of the planning study efforts. And, and the scope and the cost of the project is suggests a standalone project is needed. Um, so I'm asking for programming. Final design work for FY twenty-eight with construction for FY twenty-nine. Um, and the building will be thirty years old at that point. Next slide, please. At, uh, my final new project request is Millersville Landfill Subcell nine point four Design and Construction on page four hundred and seven. This is the next program installment in the phase development of the landfill, uh, so nine disposal area. I'm requesting four point two six million for design funding in FY twenty twenty-nine. Um, if, you know, we, we look at, uh, design life and things every year, but we would likely follow with construction funding requests in the next. Year program for F, uh, FY twenty thirty. Um, that was my final slide, so with that, I'm happy to take any questions on these projects or any other projects in the end class.
Yeah, I do get to, uh, how, the landfill, how, when is? What is the expected life expectancy of that landfill? When, uh, how long, I mean, the cells obviously will operate for another, I don't know, I think another twenty years, but. How long will that landfill last?
So the current permitted design, which just includes cell nine, so we're developing our final. Finally permitted area at this point, the estimate is two thousand and forty-eight. So one of the things we, we have, um, through the capital program is a planning study to look at opportunities for further. Uh, capacity at that property.
Got it. And how big is that facility that the, the, um, that you're trying to build a four million square foot wise? What is it? What is the expected size of it, of the, uh, the first project that you had, the new project? A four point three million?
Oh, the, um. The maintenance building?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's basically a renovation of an existing building.
Oh, so you're renovating it, okay.
Yes.
It's not completely new, new construction.
No, so, um, that's, I mean, that, that's a big success story that, that campus has been there since nineteen seventy-four. And we've had it along the way as regulations have changed and programs have changed. Um, but this building I'm talking about today was built in nineteen ninety-nine, so it's really need, it needs its, you know, first major renovation. Um, but this one renovation will take it at least to the twenty fifty time horizon, if not longer.
How, how big is it? Just curious if you, if you know the square footage.
Um, I, I'll get back to you on that. I don't know offhand.
All right, any additional comments, uh, or hands from colleagues?
I don't know if you can see mine, mine is, my hand is blending into my background.
Well, yeah, it's one of the record button for me too, so.
Oh, sorry about that.
No, you're fine.
Um, I just wanted, I, I was curious about the organic collection study and. What is, um, if you could talk a little bit about that?
Sure, the, the last council passed a resolution and we asked for some, uh, to look at enhanced organics collection. Um, basically food scraps because we already collect yard waste from the home. Um, and we do.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay.
No, go ahead, go ahead. I just, you refreshed my memory, so go, but go ahead.
Oh, no, okay, I, I'm happy to continue. Um, so we do have a, a food scrap drop-off program in all of our locations. And we take that to, uh, through an intergovernmental agreement to a food scrap composting facility that's in Upper Marlboro. Um, but the last council asked us to look, uh, via that resolution, uh, in, in, into what it would take to. Collect organics, enhanced organics, basically food scraps from the home. So we are looking at that, we're looking at programs and, and the added costs that would take for the collection and then, and the processing of that material.
Thank you.
All right, I don't see any additional hands. You might get some extra years out of that landfill. This plastic reduction act that, uh, Ms. Raviyan is championing, uh, might reduce some of, some solid waste going to it, so. Uh, just be prepared for that.
Thank you.
All right, uh, seeing no additional questions, uh, we will now transition over to wastewater. I guess W W instead of S W. All right, uh, hi, I'm, I'm Chris Murphy, uh, hi, hi Chairman, uh, Smith and the rest of the council. I'm the engineer administrator for the, uh, Bureau of Engineering and Utility Engineering. Um, should I bring the slides up or?
I have two more presentations to bring up.
Okay.
So are you dredging projects or is this you?
That's me, right there. Utility operations. All right, you can go to the next slide. Okay, so just, this is just to give you a, a feel for how big the, uh, the, the system is that's out there. Um, and for why we kind of ask for money for, uh, for asset management, uh, replacement stuff, but. Um, just looking at the piping, this is the piping that we have out there, we, we sort of shoot for. The piping to least last for seventy-five years, which is roughly a replacement goal of one point five percent. Um, so our goal would be to ask for about thirty-seven million dollars if everything was put in. Exactly at the same time, uh, you know, as, as an even, even line, but it's, it's not, we're. Sort of riding the wave, um, and as we go on, a lot of our infrastructure. Um, I think, uh, the last time I looked at it, about seventy, about fifty percent of our infrastructure was built in the seventies and before. Um, and then since the seventies, we're going to get, see a whole huge increase, so. Um, just to, just to look at what we're asking for this year, FY twenty-four, we're asking for. For water and sewer, um, replacements, thirty million dollars for pump stations. We have roughly two hundred and seventy pump stations, uh, we're asking for eighteen, um, on eighteen point nine million dollars. And then just for the paint on our water storage tanks, we're asking for two point six million dollars. Each one of these is like a, a, a lifecycle replacement cost that we have going on. Um, you know, looking at everything else, we have, you know, this does not include tanks, we have, uh, uh, thirty-three tanks. When we have three more that are in design or planning, we have, um, additional, uh, nine different, uh, water treatment plants. And eight different wastewater plants, um, it's, it's a huge system and we have fifty-five. Uh, public drinking wells, um, again, not, not in this list right here, uh, which will soon grow to about fifty-nine, uh, public drinking wells. Um, so just to give you a feel for how much, uh, how, how big our system is, right there, just these numbers added up is about three point eight billion. Um, so, um, you know, when you threw the treatment plants, everything else, then we're probably in excess of five billion dollars worth of assets. So, uh, next slide. So I'm going to just, just focus in on, um, the, um, the ones that we've asked for. More than a hundred thousand dollar increase or ones that we've had, um, big changes on, uh, just to make it sort of a simplified list. Um, there's other ones that we, we ask at standard request because they're multi-year ones and didn't include those in, in, in this list. Um, all right, let's go to the first one, the next slide. Okay, so the first one I just wanted to bring up is the Baltimore County Sewer Agreement. This is an agree, is an agreement that we have, uh, it's an interjurisdictional agreement with Baltimore County. Um, to support, um, uh, projects that happen at the Tascow Wastewater Treatment Plant. So Baltimore County pays for sixty-eight percent of the co- project cost. We pay for seven point six percent of Baltimore County's project costs. For a total of, we pay five, five point one seven percent is what Enron County shares. Um, these are, uh, improvements to the, uh, Tascow Treatment Plant. Uh, in FY twenty-four, we're asking for six million dollars. FY twenty-five is three point two four million dollars. Um, and then, uh, FY twenty-six, um, uh, it's six hundred fifty thousand dollars. And FY twenty-seven, three million dollars, and it's based on current projects they have, and then. Ongoing based off historical spending, we're asking for six hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. So, uh, go ahead, next slide. Uh, facility abandonment, these are projects that, um, you know, where things are no longer needed. Um, a lot of this stuff happens at treatment plants, but other things are, are if we have pump stations that we no longer need. Um, and that would be because maybe we have gravity sewer that's running outside the pump stations now. Uh, that we can decommission the pump stations and hook, hook them, uh, those directly into the gravity sewer. Uh, which has happened at our, our quarter field one and our Evergreen comments on. Um, and then there's a treatment plant, uh, digester demo that we don't need any digester that we don't need anymore. Um, go ahead, next slide. Uh, our mayo collection system, um, our mayo collection system is a little, little bit different than the standard system in, in that it's a. A, a step tank system, uh, they basically, they have a, um. Mayo tank, which is sort of a similar to a sub- uh, subject tank. Um, and then the effluent comes off of that and the effluent is actually what gets sent to the treatment plant. Uh, and then we have a pro, we have a operational, um, uh, uh, program that goes by and pumps out the, their septic tanks once every three years. So the mayo tanks once every three years. Uh, but money is here for, for pump station upgrades. Uh, six point three million dollars in FY twenty-four, four hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars in FY twenty-five. Five million FY twenty-six and five point one million in FY twenty-seven. Next slide. Uh, S eight oh two three hundred is our W R F Infrastructure Upgrade Retro Projects. Um, these tend to be smaller and smaller is a relative term because they're all, all very expensive, but these are things that happen at a treatment plant that. Are not necessarily major upgrades, um, but they're, they're important upgrades, uh, so two of those examples of this will be. Our protection mudwell improvements and our broadwater PCS upgrade. Um, so we typically, um, ask for about a million dollars per year unless there's specific projects that need to get done, so. In FY twenty-four, we're asking for five point five million, FY twenty-five, three point eight million based off specific projects. And then one million dollars ongoing FY twenty-six ongoing. Next slide. Our sewer project management, uh, project. Uh, this, this is, this is typically not in here, but this is, this is money that we use, um, it's for cash flow reasons for our, um. Staff augmentation consultant, our project management consultant. So we have, we have a project management consultant who helps us out for overflow needs for project management. Um, and all of their, um, costs are actually attributed to the individual. Um, C I P projects, but, you know, a- as the process of money goes through each month. We need a certain amount of funds there to make the transfer happen. Um, as our capital projects have increased, the need for more and more funds in there to make that. Efficient use of capital, um, is needed, so that's why I've asked for the increase this year for two million dollars. Okay, go ahead, next slide. Cox Creek, non E and R projects, uh, thi- this is, uh, we asked for four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Uh, this is the, to finish off, uh, our improvements at Cox Creek, uh, that were done. The need to get, were, were identified post E and R or as the E and R process is going through, but that we're not eligible for E and R funding. Um, oh, these things include, uh, our non-pulp water system out there. Um, some meter signalization and some upgrade to some, um, small, uh, pumps to the plant, um, and HVAC system. Uh, we just need the four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, um, just to kind of miss a little bit of funds, just to go ahead and, and bid this out, so. Um, go ahead, next slide. Cox Creek grit system improvements, um, you know, as we, as we've gone into the, uh, the, the project is getting ready to bid. Um, as we go in there and doing the design work, there was, uh, noticed that there were some structural re- repairs that need, need to be done on the concrete. Um, so we're asking for an additional one point three million dollars for the, uh, concrete repair, um, which is included in this project. Go to the next slide. Uh, Cattail Creek Forest Main, uh, this is a twenty-four inch. Forest main, main that runs up, uh, Route Two, uh, kind of comes out of the Berrywood. Neighborhood, uh, goes up Route Two all the way up, uh, towards College Parkway, uh, eventually ties into the gravity, gravity system. Off the Joan Station Road up and, uh, and then runs to our Mill Creek Pump Station. Uh, this is a, this is one, one of our largest, uh, forest mains, it's, uh, twenty-four inch, but actually goes all the way to thirty-six inch. Uh, on its way up there, um, it, it's, uh, it, it sends a huge amount of flow up there, um, we are, this is a, uh. Sort of, this is a repair or, or sort of replacing it out, it's, it's going to be a liner project, uh, which is going to be this, uh. It's called swage lining and what they essentially do, it's, it's very interesting process. Um, then what they'll do is they'll pull, uh, an H D P pipe through the existing pipe. And they'll stretch it sort of like a, like you would like a rubber band, when you pull a rubber band, it gets a little skinnier. And they're able to pull the pipe all the way through and then they relax it. And it fills in the voids and it creates a new, new pipe inside the old pipe. Um, it's, it's, it's going to be, uh, it's the first one we've done in the county this way, but it's a, it's a proven technology. Um, so I'm very excited about this project. It should be going to bid in June. Um, and so, uh, the project should get underway, uh, probably by the end of the year. Um, there will be some impact to, uh, uh, the, uh, surrounding, uh, Arnold and Slaughter Park neighborhoods. Uh, we've had some outreach meetings with them. Um, and we've reached out, out outreach to businesses, there will be a, a bypass line that's going to run, um, down through here. Um, so that will be noticeable to the public, um, so, uh, but that will be on the side of Route Two, so, um. Um, but I think that's about it on this one. It's exciting to get this one underway, so, uh, go ahead, next slide. The Grand Hope Replacement Project. Uh, we, we have numerous, uh, several thousand grinder pumps, um, in, in the county. They're starting to age out, this is sort of a. I'll say it's sort of a companion project to the, uh, pump station upgrade projects, uh, it's just aging infrastructure that needs to get replaced. Uh, the first project is that we're going to need to go ahead and, and, uh, start in, where it was Fishing Creek Farms area. Uh, so we're going to go ahead and go through there, replace the, the piping and, and the, uh, the grinder pumps. Uh, in this area, so we're asking for one point six and six nine million, uh, this year and then onward five hundred thousand dollars. Next project. Uh, the Broadwater Grit System Replacement, uh, we're asking for, uh, one point seven million dollars. Uh, it, this helps remove, uh, the grit out of the, um. Uh, the, before it gets into the treatment plant. Uh, the, before it gets into the treatment plant process, um, so that, you know, grit, small stones and things like that. Um, it's a, it's an upgraded project for this, so, um. Based on current, current estimate, we need one point seven nine dollars, uh, go ahead, the next slide. Cox Creek permeate piping, um, so this is the permeate is the actual, the backwash from all the, the, the E and R filters that we have. Um, out there that, um, are work- working really well, we have great, great, um, uh, great quality effluent coming out of the wastewater plant. Um, but, uh, part of the backwash is, it's, it's a little bit of an acidic wash to it. Um, and that acid is sort of eating, eating away a little bit at the, the, the couplings for the pipes, and we're getting drips. Uh, this is really, uh, a project to go in and 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 repair that and create, allow us to create a bypass. Um, so we can take the system offline to, uh, fix the situation. Um, go ahead, the next slide. All right, so the, the next slide, I just wanted to real quickly talk about, and I know we kind of touched on the septic sewer earlier. Uh, this is our, this is what we're, what we have, we call the our water program. Um, it's sort of the way to look at our, the water that we use and sort of a holistic approach. Um, which, so there's five different points to this, uh, our integrated, integrated program that we have. Um, and, um, there's, uh, stormwater, which was Eric's group, and we, he's already sort of touched on that. Uh, groundwater resiliency, I'll talk about that, that's our man shock for recharge project. Um, our wastewater treatment plant and ha- enhancements, and that was our E and R projects that we did. Uh, the septic to sewer program, uh, which I touched on earlier. And, uh, our small system upgrade, our minor systems, and I'll, I'll touch on that. Um, the goal for the septic conversions is to, uh, do six thousand over the next thirty years. There's forty-one thousand septic systems that we have in the county. Um, and say, I think it's, I think it's thirteen thousand five hundred roughly, of those are in the critical area. Um, and then there's a whole, uh, there's another number, which don't have the number offhand, that are in onsite wastewater management problem areas, um, which are ones that. Uh, have unique challenges to them, um, uh, that the, uh, health department has identified. Um, and, uh, the small system upgrades, we'll, I'll go into these a little bit, these are, um. Use the correct term, they're manufactured home. What you, what, what we used to call mobile home communities, that are manufactured home communities, um, that have wastewater, uh, plants associated with them. Um, we'll go, go on that a little bit, but, um, uh, we're looking at, uh, doing some upgrades at their, uh, wastewater plants. So, go on the next slide. So the first one I'm gonna talk about is their manager for recharge. Um, so, uh, we get, uh, let's see. This is to, actually, what we're gonna do is we're gonna treat the wastewater effluent, so that what comes out of our treatment plants. We're gonna treat it to, um, your drinking water standards. We're gonna match the, uh, what the, the, um, geo- physiology, called geophyseology of the groundwater. Um, and inject that back into the ground, um, and, um. What that will give us is that'll give us a sort of long-term groundwater resiliency. Um, it'll, it'll essentially, it'll, it'll raise the sort of the, the pressure. Um, in the system, um, if you, if you, if you don't know, we currently, um, pump out somewhere in the neighborhood of. About thirty-four MGD per day for our drinking water. Um, we're a, a fully groundwater system, um, uh, we don't use surface water. Um, and, uh, so this is, this is an effort for us to sort of plan the long-term resiliency. And also, it'll actually allow us to, uh, reduce our nitrogen, nitrogen, uh, nutrient, um, output to the Chesapeake Bay and achieve our. TMDO goals. Um, and so this is, this is just a, a, um, a, a slide that shows. That it's, it's a sort of a cost-effective solution, when you look at it compared to the other ways to reduce, uh, nutrients out there. As you can see, the OSDS, those are septic systems, um, those are some more of the more expensive, uh, uh, things that are out there. Uh, stormwater, stormwater used to be more expensive, but Eric's done a great job in getting, getting the cost for that down. Um, and then our minor systems seem very cost-efficient, and then we'll go into that in a minute, so, go ahead, next slide. So our man shock re- recharge is the, the actual project. Um, what it does is it puts an advanced wastewater treatment plant on the end of our. Treatment plants to treat it essentially down to, to drinking water standards, then we're gonna, I've said, we're gonna put it back down into the groundwater supply. Um, the, we're asking for four point two million in FY twenty-four, uh, nineteen point one million in FY twenty-five. Uh, ten point six million FY twenty-six. Uh, FY twenty-seven, sixteen million, million, and then eventually in FY thirty, we're gonna build a full-scale, um, major plant in FY twenty-five. We're looking at, uh, building a, um. Uh, it could, a demonstration-sized facility, about a half MGD, the full, the full-scale facility will be about, um, um, eight MGD. Um, it'll take the flow that's currently from the tuxin, uh, fully to, into the ground, so right now. Um, out of the tuxin, uh, treatment plant, right now, we have a, um. A pilot system, which is just a, a sort of a, um. A smaller, ve- very smaller version, we can fit it in a room of what this advanced, uh, wastewater treatment plant would build. This event, advanced water treatment plant would look like, uh, we, so we can test and optimize. Exactly what we would need, need to do to the, um, uh, effluent coming out there to get us your drinking water standards. Um, go ahead, next slide. Uh, minor system upgrades, so as, as I talked about this earlier, th- these are the, um, the manufactured home communities. Uh, we have several down in the, in the southern part of the county, uh, Boons Estates, uh, Li- uh, Lions Creek, Maryland Manor, that's a mobile states. Uh, Wayson's Woods, um, so where, where we're gonna look at here is we're gonna look at, um, replacing the. Existing, uh, treatment plants down there with ones that can, uh, achieve E and R. Um, we, we've talked to, to local stakeholders down there, um, it's basically, it's only gonna be for treatment. Um, at those mobile home parks, it's not gonna be able to be expanded, uh, beyond, um, uh, what the, what the foot, what the current. Uh, uses are down there for the, um, uh, the current flow rates down there, so it's not a, it's like, it's. We, we don't want it to be a growth project down in there, we really just wanna treat the effluent coming out of those treatment plants, they've had some, um. Some permit violations on some of their, uh, facilities down there, and basically we, uh, we've been talking with MD and it would, uh. They are, would greatly like if we could, if we could, uh, upgrade these things. Um, so they were very willing to, um, provide a, a high level of BRF funding would be likely for these projects, um, so. Um, so we're asking for FY, FY twenty-four, one point one million dollars, the overall cost to do, um, these. What's gonna end up being five mobile home communities, um, two of them are gonna consolidate into one because they're right next to each other. Uh, fifty-one point nine million dollars overall. And I didn't mention Holiday Estates, and there's another one, um, Summer Hill, those two might potentially be able to just tie it right into our gravity sewer system. Um, and we have, we have reached out to these communities and then, and talked to them, um, there is definitely interest, um, in those, uh, in those ownership groups of, of two of these upgrades. So, all right, go ahead, next slide. All right, re- regional biosolids, uh, is the project that, um, I'm very excited about, um, so biosolids, uh, just to. Quick, quick overview of biosolids. Uh, biosolids is the, what used to be called, uh, sludge that you, that you get out of the treatment plants, it's the solids that are left over from the treatment plant process. Um, usually, what, what we currently have right now is we have a, um, a, uh, a third-party, um, uh, contract with, with Synergy. Uh, Synergy takes the, the dried biosolids, and they'll take it out and they'll do land application, usually they're shipping it out to, um. Virginia or to, um, uh, Pennsylvania for land application on, say, farmers' fields or at landfills. Um, and so, um. It's getting harder and harder, um, and more and more expensive for them to find areas that, that, um, they can apply these things to. And then there's also now there's concerns about PFAS, um, even the, the, the state of Maine recently banned all land application. Uh, we think that's probably gonna be working its way down to other jurisdictions and the, and the other states you're talking about that also. Um, this, um, our regional biosolids facility. We're looking at it in sort of a two-stage approach, um, one is to build a plant, um, sized facility. And then to follow up with a regional facility to handle all of our biosolids at, at one location. Um, the, um, biosolids, um, the, the process that we're looking at is, is called pyrolysis. Uh, and what it does is intentionally, essentially it heats the biosolids up. Uh, turns them into more of a, um, it's almost like a charcoal-type material. Um, and it's called biochar, um, and the, uh, the. Uh, the process of pyrolysis heats it up, um, it doesn't include oxygen, um, so it's, it's really just, it's not an incinerator, it's, it just heats it up. Um, and it heats up to a temperature of, I think roughly between five hundred and eight hundred degrees Celsius in, in that range. Um, it will destroy PFAS, um, it destroys pharmaceuticals, uh, microplastics, things of that nature. Um, it gives off gas, and the gas actually we use and we recycle that through the process that uses a fuel to heat up. The, uh, the, uh, biochar, me, keep making the biochar, so once you initially heat it up, you can continuously. Uh, use the off gas to, to heat it up and keep the system running. It turns into biochar, biochar is, is used, um, I'm talking to Eric earl- uh, uh, earlier. He said they've actually used biochar in some of their stormwater management filters, um, it's, it can be used as a filter, it can be used as a soil amendment, um, it increases soil fertility. Um, increases, uh, it can do, does carbon sequestration. Um, it increases, um, uh, water retention and also improves drainage at the same time, which is kind of interesting. Uh, it does a slow re- release of nitrogen, um, because it will bind the nitrogen up, and I'll do a slower release of nitrogen. Um, so it has all these different, um, advantages, we think, and then also it can also be even used as a soil odor filter, um, it's sort of a. It's kind of a not quite, um. Uh, let's see, it's, it's, it's a decent version of sort of, uh, similar to, uh, granulated active carbon, but it's not as. Fantastic as granulated active carbon has similar properties to it. So, um, but this is a project that we think is, will be, um. Uh, great for the, for the, um, uh, for the county, it, it re- reduces the volume of the biosolids down about eighty to ninety percent. Um, so, um, in the process, which is, which is a great thing, because we'll have less material to handle. Um, if you go to the next slide, um, we think there's a, a nice return on investment for us on this. Um, currently, the, uh, if you look at the, the, uh, the red lines, currently what we're paying Synergy per year, roughly nine point eight million dollars a year. To run our, uh, biosolids facility. Um, with this investment, we think we can, in, in over, over thirty years, see a realized gain of about. A hundred and ten million dollars, by just us doing this process, uh, we see a ca- positive cash flow, um, out about ten years. Um, this is based off, uh, current rates, so, or actually eleven years, just. Um, so we think it's, it's, it's gonna be a, hopefully a win for the environment, a win for the county, win for our cash flow, so. Uh, all right, good, go ahead, next, next slide. Uh, Cox Creek, uh, uh, septic improvements, uh, based off current estimate, um, we're requesting two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in FY twenty-four. Additional three million in FY twenty-five, uh, this is, this is to provide a, uh, septic. A septic receiving facility, so for all that septic tank, um, uh, all the, all the pump septic tanks that, that, uh, come, they drop their material off to. Uh, Cox Creek, and this is to, uh, improve the system that we have there, make it more automated, allowing them to be able to drop it off twenty-four seven. Uh, so it's, it's, uh, we think it's, it'll, it'll be good for the, um, uh, septic community, and, and also for, um. Uh, also for the operation staff, um, that they don't have to manage twenty-four seven, um, but we, but we can provide that, um, has a, um. Benefit to those septic haulers. Um, all right, let's go to the next slide. Wastewater project planning, um, this is actually the, the, the project that we do most of our, our water, uh, program out of, so this is like project management. Uh, we also are Mar, the Mar facility that I was talking about earlier, this is in here also with. The test wells that we haven't, that we're working on with the state right now to, to get those permitted, so we can do some test wells for the Mar. Um, system, um, this is we, the sewer asset management program, um, I talked earlier about the fact that we have, um. Huge amount of assets, we, we, we have, what, over five billion, um, uh, dollars worth of assets. Um, this is gonna be a program, we're really gonna look at, how do we set up our asset management? Um, how do we kind of get ahead of the wave, how do we plan on, um, the, the best, the best ways, best, um. Best practices for, um, asset management, condition assessment, um, financial planning, everything, so that we can make sure that we're asking for. Uh, the right money at the right time, um, so that we use our money wisely, um, and that we're, we're gonna be replacing our, uh. Infrastructure wha- at, when it needs to get done, um, and not reactive, which we're more, more reactive right now, um. We react to breaks, we don't necessarily get ahead of the ball, um, as much as, um, we think we should, so. Um, and then there's another one, it's sewer utility benchmarking, that's looking at ways that we can efficiently run our treatment plants. Um, we have, in both of these sewer asset management and sewer utility benchmarking, we have similar projects on the water side also, so. All right, let's go to the next slide. State Highway Relocation Sewer, um, this is actually State Highway Relocation Sewer and Water, which, it's, it's under the X project here. Uh, sewer, but it also handles water also, um, this is for we, when we run our infrastructure through state highway. Uh, if they need us to relocate it, um, or move it, um, or if they have a big project and we see benefit there, we do it through this project. Um, and so in FY twenty-four, we're asking for a million dollars, um, and FY twenty-five, we have a ten point two million dollars, because we're gonna be moving a, uh. Replacing a big water, water main, um, out there on, uh, Dorsey Road. Um, and then onward FY twenty-six onward, three hundred thousand dollars, and this is a multi-year project, so. Um, go ahead, next slide. All right, so that was the, that was wastewater, um, should I go ahead into the sewer, or should I stop and see if there's questions? Yeah, we'll definitely call here, um, any questions from any of my colleagues? All right, I see no hand. Yeah, so go ahead and, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll. Uh, get through this, and I think that, because I think that's the last portion of this brief, right? Yeah, or dredging, dredging's after this. Yeah, you guys give me a lot of confidence that you ask no questions, so that's good, I must have done a decent job. All right, let's, let's go ahead, so this next one again is the, uh, is the, uh, water projects. Again, I only highlighted the ones that we had major, um, projects. Major increases on or major changes in the out years for. So, um, you can go on the, the next one, so this is the, the next one, the first one we're talking about is the lead service line replacement. Uh, so this is a new project. Um, EPA, um, revised their lead copper rule back in twenty twenty-one, and basically, they kind of changed the ru-. Change rules, but kind of made an additional effort to replace any lead service lines that people may have.
Of course, I did, I did, you know, I happened to see Miss Feed her hand up, I'm sorry about that.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That's okay, um, I wanted to ask a question on the Arnold Water Treatment Plant that was in the previous slide.
Arnold, um, the Arnold Water Treatment?
I thought it was in that list that was on the slide previous.
Oh, oh, yeah, so the, 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 just the, just the previous slide, the, the water list, the water projects. I think I'll, I'll go into that, um, I should be going into that, if it's on, if it's on the list, I'll go into it in more detail.
Okay, if you're gonna get to it, then no worries, I can wait.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, there's a bunch of, so I think, I'm pretty sure, if not, I'll come back to it at the end.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right. Um, we're going to go ahead to the, uh, back to the presentation real quick. Okay, so, so the lead service line replacement project, um, the initial part of this is by October of twenty twenty-four. We need to have an inventory together of, of all of our service line house connections that potentially. Um, had lead or could be lead, um, so that they can be replaced, this is on, both on the public. And the private side, now, o- over the years, we've made a big effort to replace anything on the public side that might have had. Lead, and this might even be included in, like, for galvanized, um, service connections, they have used lead solder, we replace those. Uh, we did not touch anything on the private side, so, um, there's, this is, there's gonna be a big push for us to. Go through and, and replace those on the, on the private side, I'm not sure how we're gonna do that yet, so it's still to be determined, but we wanted to make sure we put funding. In here so that we can, um, uh, have it there so that we, uh, plan on it. And roughly, uh, I have the first number there is, is how much we think the, this actually lead and service inventory is gonna cost us. Which is the two point four seven six million dollars, and then FY twenty-five onward is a ramp up to the, this replacement, uh, process, so. Uh, program, so if you go to the next slide real quick, I just want to make sure that people are aware that, um, to slide twenty-six. Okay, so just, just to make sure that you guys are aware that there, there's no known risk to the public for, for lead from this. Um, we've been monitoring, um, lead, uh, in our system since nineteen ninety-one. Um, an action item is if it exceeds fifteen micrograms per liter. And we have not had any actual items since nineteen ninety-one, so. Um, and, uh, right now, what we do is we, when we put, put our water in their system, we actually put it at a higher pH. Um, we put it out at seven, seven and a half to, to eight point O, and what that does is, um. When you get lead in your waters, it's because of the water, it's corrosive. Um, so this makes it so that our water is not corrosive, so it's not, it's not gonna be leaching any lead out of anything. Um, if, if there was lead in any sort of pipe, so, uh, it goes out at seven and a half to eight. Uh, we also increased the alkalinity, um, so that, uh, of the calcium carbonate, and I think what that does is that kind of puts, uh, um. Like I said, I should not, I, I think it, it helps with the coating on it, I'm not the water chemistry guy, so I don't know a hundred percent know exactly what the calcium carbonate does, but I don't, do know that it helps. Uh, make it so that the lead does not, uh, leach out at all, um, the, the main driver there is the higher pH will not allow it to, 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 uh, leach out. Um, so this new program, uh, requires replacement of both, uh, public and private service lines. Um, and then, um, uh, so we, we're gonna be finishing up this inventory in October of twenty twenty-four, and we'll have a much better idea of. How many of these, uh, lines need to be replaced, um, so the, um, the, the, um. The law changed in eighty-six, it said you can no longer use lead in service connections, so when we look at our potential in the county, that's seventy-eight thousand service connections. Um, we think we were probably already placed fifteen thousand or, or so on the public side that we know about, um, but. Um, we're gonna get a much better idea of how many of these things there really are out there, um, as we finish off this inventory, so. Um, we can go on the next slide. Uh, demo abandoned facilities, this is just our, our multi-year demoing, uh, abandoned facilities, uh, project. We're asking for one point six million dollars in FY twenty-four and three hundred sixty-two thousand dollars in FY twenty-five. Uh, next slide. For the Crofton Meadows to water treatment plant upgrade, um, we're asking for, uh, two point four million dollars. Uh, for this project, this is the final, uh, wells that are needed for the initial expansion, they're going from five to fifteen million dollars. Uh, they should be, uh, moving forward, um, hopefully by the end of the year, uh, being bid out on this one, so. Uh, next up is our water strategic plan. Okay, and so we do this one every, about every ten years, uh, our water strategic plan. Uh, last one, we, last one, we started in two thousand and thirteen, so we're right on, goo- good timing to start this one, uh, in, uh. Right now, twenty, twenty twenty-four, if we get, we get the funding for, for that, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna do the, um, the initial one, which was not part of the. One we did last time, we're gonna do a flow factor study, uh, which is really looking at the uses and, and how much water each use. Uh, uses, you know, like a restaurant, a school system, businesses, medical office, things of that nature. We're gonna be looking at the flow factors and trying to, to see how our flow factors are, see if we need to change those. Uh, and then we'll, in the following year, we'll go into debt demand projections, um, and then developing a comprehensive. Uh, CIP based on any expansion needs, uh, the following year, so, um, next slide. Uh, W seven eights, so W seven eight seven eight zero zero fire hydrant rehab, this is just a life cycle painting on fire hydrants, uh. Do we paint those every seven to ten years, so. Um, go ahead, next, next project, our elevated water storage tank. Uh, like we said, like you said earlier, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty-three water storage tanks that are, um. In service, uh, that includes ground storage tanks, um, but right now we have. Two projects that are currently in the design phase and one project that's in the planning phase, so our, um, two projects are Bacon Town. Um, which we think we have a site that's gonna be out near the, um. Uh, there off Old Portland Road, um, we're looking at, over there, some, we're working with the DC government, uh, they have some property over there, see if we can't get that leased. And then we have another project, uh, over at, uh, Bel Grove. Um, which is, uh, off Hammond's Lane, uh, that we acquired property there, and we should be removed for design, it should be constructed in the near, near term. And then we're also looking at putting a new tank in it, or Heritage Harbor, uh, we're still, uh, looking at, uh, potential sites, um, for that, um, so. And that's what the request FY twenty-five will be, to build the Heritage Harbor tank, so, um, go ahead, next slide. Uh, Crofton Meadows two expansion phase two, uh, this is our expansion from fifteen to twenty. NGD, uh, this is just an increase based off current estimates, uh, current schedule. Um, and we're pushing the, the wells back, because we should have, uh, enough capacity for those, um, uh, in the near term. Um, so we're asking for a five million dollar, uh, increase amount, so, go ahead, next, next project. Uh, Route thirty-two, um, uh, which goes along Fort Meade, um, we think we're actually finally getting some progress, um, moving this through, uh, uh, Fort Meade. Uh, this project needs to get, get through, um. Right now, the Maryland City, um, pressure zone, um, is only, uh, sourced by one line that runs from, um, the, uh, Chesapeake Pressure Zone. Um, this would connect the Crofton area through Fort Meade up to Maryland City. Um, provide us a, a, an additional, um, uh, supply line, in case anything happens with the, uh, with the other supply line. Uh, allow us to move water through our system, uh, much better, uh, it's been difficult, uh, to get through, uh, working, um, just, just with the different stakeholders, because we have to go through. Both the Fort Meade property and, uh, also through, um, the, uh, protect it wildlife refuge. So, we're working that, we think we're positive enough to, to start requesting all the funds we think we need for this, um, but, uh, we just need to get through the, the, the design permitting process in the near term, so. Uh, go ahead, next, next, um, next one, uh, W eight oh three three hundred, this is. Our, again, this is our small project upgrade for, for water plants, um, so we're asking for. Uh, two point eight million dollars in FY twenty-four, nine hundred eighty thousand dollars in FY twenty-five, and then seven hundred fifty thousand dollars onward. Um, based off the FY twenty-four and twenty-five are based off current projects that we have, and. Uh, FY twenty-five, twenty-six and onward is based off historical spending. Good, next project. Uh, W eight oh three six hundred, uh, this is our east-west transmission main project. Uh, this, this provides, uh, an additional supply along the top part of the county, um, this is both, uh, to, um. To improve situ- improve the, the, um, piping and the sort of the backbone of our system up there. Um, you know, a few, a few years ago, we went independent of Baltimore City Water. Um, and so this is really to, to provide for that backbone that wasn't, um, that we never really had in the system. Um, also, it's also supports growth that we have out there at BWI in the surrounding area. Um, so this is the, the cost to do that, it's a major line that's gonna run, gonna connect our, um, Glenberry High Zone and Glen, Glenberry Low Zone. Across to our airport square zone, and then to the west part of the county, to allow us, just like the, the title is, to move our water from the east to the west. And backwards from west to east if we needed to, uh, in the future, so. Um, all right, go ahead, next, next slide. Uh, new cut wa- water treatment plant, uh, this is a property, um, uh, sighting study. Uh, we're looking on in the future, uh, twenty thirty-five, we need, um. Uh, to build, ba- based off our, our last arrangement, a new, um. Treatment plant, um, so we're looking for, uh, property, um, out in the system, um, looking for about ten to twelve acres, we thought we would get. On this ahead of the game, so that we're not looking for property in, in twenty thirty-five, that we're working for property now, so that we can have it. Available for when we need to go out there and actually construct the new water plant. Um, go ahead, and the next one, uh, Arnold, Arnold Water Treatment Plant Upgrades. So this is, this is a project, hopefully, uh, Councilman Phelan will answer your questions. This is a project that's gonna go ahead and it's gonna, um, uh, build, uh, admin and operating facilities, uh, for the, um, folks that are out there. It's also in, in some, um, maintenance areas, also it's gonna upgrade the fire alarm systems out there. Uh, and also some SCADA improvements for, um, uh, SCADA system. Um, and what else is it gonna, I think, I think that's about all it's gonna do out there right now, so, uh, we don't ask you for funding right now in FY twenty-four, but we are asking for funding in, in twenty-five. Okay, uh, Crofton Meadows Water Treatment Plant Improvements, um, we're asking for a hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars based off the current. Um, estimate, uh, this is another one of the projects that are going to, um. Improve the, um, water treatment plant, uh, based on the SCADA system, uh, the fire alarms. Um, and provide new, uh, HVAC system, um, where they're getting a lot of, um, issues due to, uh, high humidity, um, and, um. Corrosion in our, uh, high and lift, high and low lift pumping stations, so, um, go to the next slide. Dorsey Water Treatment Plants, uh, this is another, um, operating building, maintenance facility, um, and SCADA improvements and, and fire alarm system. Uh, asking for two hundred seventy, that seventy-six thousand dollars in, in FY twenty-four, um, and then, uh, looks like, we're, the schedule is the, just, just to go into construction FY twenty-six. Um, this will include a, um, a pole barn for some, uh, uh. Uh, the, for some equipment storage, a SCADA system, fire alarm improvements, um, and some painting and repair of other structures in the facility. Go in the next slide. Crofton Meadows, uh, water treatment plant rehab, um, this is the final piece in the Crofton Meadows upgrade. Uh, this is the original five million gallon plant that was constructed, this is just upgrade those facilities, because we haven't touched those yet. Um, and then, and then the Crofton Meadows plant will be all new, so, uh, everything will be touched there. And then the last one we have is, the last slide is the. Water project planning, um, and the big driver on this one is that water asset management plan that I talked about earlier. Really kind of getting control on, um, what kind of, uh, uh, on our asset management plan, moving forward, you know, through condition assessments. Uh, financial planning, um, uh, uh, really kind of figure out the best, best practices on how we should manage our assets. Um, now that our, everything's starting to age, and we're starting to, um, really start, gonna, gonna start seeing those, um, those needs, so. Um, with that, that's everything on water and wastewater. Uh, does anybody have any questions?
Let's see here, I see a man look, uh, Ms. Feeler, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so, Mr. Verfey, thank you for all of that, um, it's a lot. But, um, quick question on the water strategic plan, um, that sounds very exciting, I know we have chatted about EDUs over the last few years. What is the timeline for that study and, um, and results?
So I'm, I'm hoping to, um, sometime in, in, hopefully after July to, to start up the, the flow factor study, which will be the EDU study. Assuming that's gonna probably take about a year, um, and then, uh, once that's done, uh, at the same time, we'll be actually, um, uh, going out to, um. Get a consultant on board to do the final two pieces, which is the, um, uh, the, uh, strategic plan and the, um. The capital strategic plan and demand projections and the, um, modeling, so. Uh, so total, it should, it'll, it shouldn't, it might, it may take three years to get everything done, the EDU part though should be done first, that'll, that'll be done hopefully within the next year.
Okay, and implemented on the ground as well, or just the study's done?
The study will be done, and I think we'll, we'll be talking about it as DPW on, on how to, uh, what, what changes we need to do, um, I.
That's exciting, thank you.
All right, uh, I don't see any additional hands raised. Thank you for, uh, uh, yeah, it is a lot, a lot of, a lot of activities, uh, happening within. Uh, DPW, and what's interesting is, if you look at the county as a whole, especially on the capital side, it's that infrastructure piece that holds the county together. Uh, that DPD, TPW plays a role in, so, uh, you know, most people don't even think about this, nor do they care about it, but it's so intergrew into. Uh, quality of life that, you know, uh, we would be remiss if we didn't, you know, pay proper attention to it. So, uh, if there are no questions, I'm gonna go to dredging, I think that's, uh, next, the final one.
Uh, yes, Dana Braun, Engineer Administrator for General Engineering in the Department of Public Works. Um, I'll finish up here with the dredging presentation, um, you go ahead and go to the next slide. Um, just as a little bit of background, um, the goal of the dredging program is to maintain navigable depths for recreational boating along with county shoreline. Um, there are a hundred and sixty-three county cha- channels, county cha- maintain channels countywide. And also two federal channels, um, that our dredging program does the dredging in the county channels, and we, we provide support to. Um, the Corps of Engineers when needed for the federal channels, and I will say that, um, one of those, the Rockhold Creek Channel, um. The Corps of Engineers is planning to start, um, an updated dredging, uh, program on that, um, in the next, uh, month or two. Um, our program basically is, uh, typically fifty-fifty split with the DNR Waterway Improvement Funds. Um, as you, as we go into this little bit, you'll see that basically we make an annual request. For the projects that have been identified, and then whatever. Projects get approved for funding by the Waterway Improvement Fund in the state's budget, we include those in our program, and the rest, um, are deferred until. The next time we make an application. Uh, next slide. So this year, we, uh, made a request of eight projects, totaling seven point two million. Uh, to the state, back in September, we made the grant application. Uh, the first four, top four priorities of those were approved for funding, those are the ones that are involved in this list. Um, I'll go over those in a little bit more detail, uh, here. Uh, the others then will be looking at, um, including them in our next, uh, application next fall. My next slide. So, on the four projects, this is the first one, the Lake Placid dredging in the Magathie watershed, um, what you'll see on these. Um, slides, um, basically, the area outlined in blue is where the dredging is planned to occur. And then, uh, summary of the number of beneficiaries and the total cubic yards to be dredged. Um, both with all, which also, uh, play a factor in, uh, determining whether the DNR ends up approving. Uh, the projects for, for funding, uh, next slide. Uh, the second, uh, one's also in the Magathie watershed, the inlet to the Little Magathie River, on that area, um. As you can see on this one, partly because we're going out into, uh. More open water there with much of this, there's sixty-five hundred cubic yards, uh, planned here. So this is, becomes a large material project, um, next slide. Uh, then down on the South River watershed, the Church Creek dredging, two separate areas on there, um. Again, uh, in the area where there's the most recreational boating and where the surveys have. Shown that, uh, dredging is needed, and next slide. And also on the South River watershed, the fourth of those that were approved this year are several areas in the Ball Creek and Kitty Creek area, um. So, yeah, that was the fourth of those that were approved to, uh, for funding by DNR this year, um, next slide. So the other. Uh, I'll say miscellaneous, other smaller, uh, changes to the FY twenty-four budget or, uh, proposed. Um, basically, uh, run through here is some givebacks on completed projects. Um, we are recommending the Waterway Improvement Project Planning convert to a multi-year project now, uh, from just, uh, annual funding. Because that is where, uh, the, where the projects are used to, um, do the various work necessary to complete, um. The, the effort leading up to the grant application, which is becoming more, uh, complex. Every year for the amount of work we have to do. Um, and then, um, the last three on this list are, uh, projects that, um, are. Are two, basically in the process of bidding now that have, uh, updated cost estimates. Uh, those, uh, three projects are anticipated to be under construction this winter. Um, next project, next slide, please. Uh, that's the end, okay, um. The FY twenty-three program, then I had mentioned those three, which were approved for grants in, in for FY twenty-two. Go to construction this winter, the FY twenty-three projects on Matthias and Pedicary Creeks. Um, or I'm sorry, Mill Creek and Pedicary Creek will be, uh, construction the following year, and the. Projects that we saw being, um. Approved for grant funding for this year, we're looking at, uh, constructing the winter of twenty-five, twenty-six. That's just gonna give you an overall idea of the timeline required from the, when we initially get the grant approval. To, um, working through the design and permitting process especially. Uh, and then construction times are limited due to various waterway, uh, limitations on each of these, so that on almost all of them. Uh, we'll see actually constru- actual construction between November and February, um, of the given year. So, that's all I have there, if there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Ms. Feeler, so your hand first. Up, you're, you're still.
Yeah, there we go. Sorry about that, um, Mr. Braun, I appreciate your, um, presentation, I just want to confirm one thing and then ask one question. So, nothing has changed in regard to the requirement for any dredging project to meet the standards that the state requires? And, and there's funding involved from the state, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then my, my follow-up question is, the materials that you gather are, um. That you accumulate, I don't know what the appropriate word is to use there during the dredging process. Are, are the locations in which the dredging materials are going, are those predetermined? How does that work? How do you decide where to take that material?
Uh, it's part of the program work, um, we have. Four, um, identified county-owned facilities, it's called dredge material placement sites. Um, that we use, and in looking at the program, the combination of proximity to where the dredging actually occurs. And the overall capacity of those, uh, placement sites is taken into consideration, usually it's. Closest unless there's a real problem with capacity, um. Well, a little over a year ago, um, we actually also entered into an agreement with the. Maryland Port Administration to be able to use a certain amount of capacity at their, uh, facility at Cox Creek, which helps us a lot. Which helps us a lot, um in the oh, you know, in both costs and the overall placement plan for how much we can use. Um so that's being worked into the program as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Pete, you're on mute, oh.
Uh any more questions on uh dredging? Alright, I don't see any hands or inquisitive facial expressions, and so um. Um what I do is, uh Miss 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 Karen Henry, if you wanted to sort of any last minute remarks, uh since DPW is kind of your your warehouse.
Oh, okay, thank you, Karen Henry, Director of Public Works, um I. Thank you so much for paying attention and hanging on this long through all these capital projects, I know, and we get pretty technical into um. Our water and sewer in particular, because we just love it so much, and we just have such dedicated folks to 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 making sure our systems are well maintained. So we just hope you will consider approving all of our projects we've requested this year, and we will be happy to. Meet with you tomorrow to give you some more information and go over our operating budget.
Perfect, alright, uh is there any uh anything else, uh any council member would like to bring before this body? Alright, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Feeler.
Is there a second?
I'd better second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Alright, the motion carries, the county council is adjourned until tomorrow, Tuesday, May ninth, two thousand twenty three at nine AM, when we will again here. Uh meet virtually for more uh FY twenty four budget presentations, our first public hearing. On the proposed FY twenty four budget is this Thursday, seven PM in our chambers in Annapolis. On the council's website, there is a dedicated FY twenty four page, here you will find information on how to testify. Or uh comment on the proposed FY twenty four budget um uh for Anaronda County, so, that being said. Enjoy the rest of your day and uh great lunch, and we will see you all tomorrow.